Good evening. I propose to start the meeting this evening by reading the required opening statement, which says more of us this. This is a special meeting of the Princeton Zoro... Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment, which is being held on November the 14th, 2018, at 7:30 PM in the municipal complex. As soon to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting is being given by prominently posting the notice of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment. Such notice has been placed on the official bulletin board of the Princeton Municipal Complex and by transmitting a copy of this notice to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, Comcast Media, and by filing a copy with the Clerk of Princeton on the ninth day of November 2018. Could you call the roll for us, Ms. Tordia?
Mr. Cohen? Ms. Coulson?
Here.
Mr. Davich? Mr. Floyd?
Here.
Mr. Schreiber?
Here.
Mr. Tenhambaum? Mr. Valvanes? Ms. Chen?
Here.
Ms. Lambrose?
Here.
Chairman Royce?
Here.
Thank you.
Is anyone here for the 22 Henderson Avenue case? Would you come forward? I understand that you would like to carry this case until our next meeting so that you could have appropriate stuff with you.
Yes, good evening. We would like to request a carry without further notice as we'd like to introduce planning, testimony, and our planner had a conflict tonight.
Okay.
Board members, the noticing is in order, so you would need to take jurisdiction tonight.
I'm sorry.
You'll need to take jurisdiction tonight of the application so the applicant can carry it and does not have to renotice again for next week.
They will have to renotice.
No, they won't. That's what they're asking for.
Just a regular mail to make people aware.
In the past, the Board has asked as a courtesy if applicants are willing to send out another notice just by first-class mail. So it'd be the same thing that you sent previously, but no need now to do it certified.
Yes, that should be fine.
Okay. So I don't know if anyone's here tonight, but it'll be carried then to December 12th?
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, so we'll now start going down the regular tasks that we have. And the first one is we have a resolution of memorialization, which for Sunrise Development Inc., and the file number on that is Z-1717-514. This was a fairly long document and was circulated with our packages. Are there any changes, comments, anything that we need to do in real time here? If not, a motion to accept to... I move to accept. ...add a second to that motion.
I'll second it.
We have a motion on the second. And Madam Attorney, I think you have to call the names of those of us.
I will. Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
You.
Oh, wait. I see Mr. Davich is arriving, so I'll ask Mr. Davich if he'd like to. We are considering the resolution for Sunrise.
Right, correct.
And there's been a motion to approve and seconded, so we were taking the roll call. So I don't know if you have any comments or if you're gonna vote for the resolution.
I'll vote for approval.
Okay.
Great. Okay. So the first of the cases we will hear this evening is 246 Valley Road. That carries the case number Z-1818-616. If you'll come forward, I'll ask Mr. Bridger again to make any additions to his comments that are needed and...
Mr. Bridger will swear you in for the evening. Do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, ma'am, I do.
Thank you.
Good evening. This case was carried, I think, from the October or September hearing. It's an application for a hardship C1 variance to permit a construction of a second-story addition on top of an existing first-floor structure. It's properties located in the R6 zone, subject to the Use in Bulk Regulations in accordance with 10B253, 255, and 246. Subject's noncomplying with respect to lot area requirements 10,891, and existing is 10,391, and it's also noncomplying with respect to the required lot depth, requirements 85, and the existing 69 feet. And the subject property itself is noncompliant with respect to the side yard setback requirements 15, the existing is 9.51. Just a recap of the history. Applicant was granted a variance, not the applicant, but the property was granted a variance in 1971 to construct a nine-by-nine, a nine-foot-by-33-foot addition to the rear of the structure. That was done, and it was... Applicant is asking to place a second story on the existing structure, and the first floor will contain a family room and a wet bar. The second store for the proposed addition will contain a bedroom and a full bath. The plans have been revised since the last time the Board saw the application. Previously, entry into the addition was through the basement. Now you can actually enter the first-floor addition through the first floor of the existing dwelling through the kitchen. They've redesigned to have a stairwell in there, and that's the main change. I should just note that the applicant should talk about the occupancy of the property. There's been some rental issues, registration issues here in the past. It's currently... Everything's legal with the property and it's rented out legally to a family or, you know, individuals, and that's basically an update on the application.
Okay. Do we have any questions, Mr. Bridger?
Could you be more specific with some of the rental problems in the past, issues?
Back in like 19... Are we... Excuse me, 2015, '16, there was, I guess, a basement. Kitchen had been created, and it wasn't really a kitchen. They just put like a microwave as operating as a kitchen, and rental housing went in and issued a violation notice, and the kitchen area was removed, and it's since functioned as, I guess, a five-bedroom rental, you know? And it's been legal since that point, so...
Is the property currently used as a rental property?
I... There's a current rental certification on it. I don't know. You could ask the applicant. She could speak to that better than I could.
So if you would care to speak to the case, now it's been modified yet again.
Okay. Ma'am, before you start testifying, we need to swear you in. So if you'd raise your right hand, do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
So, good evening, everyone, board member. My name is Fang Chao Lu. I live at 246 Valley Road. I have the, like, it's a variance, like, it's a zoning permit in 2014 or '15, and then I want to add one bedroom in the beginning, so I finished the foundation, everything. After I remarried, my daughter got married, I have the grandkids in next year, May, so I decided to re-move back to Princeton House, so... Because my husband is from Yingle Line. He's 75 years old. In driving distance, you know, right side left, he hard to adopt, so we had a harder shape, lived in the western winter, so we decide back to Princeton House. So, one... Before one bedroom, actual on first floor, not enough, so we changed the plan, so come to you here for zoning permit for at the second floor. Before, we accessed the new addition through the basement, and all board member reject, so I reversed the plan and take less the space for my kitchen and, you know, the countertop, make access door from the kitchen to new addition. So you can see the new plan, everything is there, and if any question, please ask me.
Okay. Do we have any questions?
I'm quite curious why the floor, the finished floor of the new addition is so far below the existing house, requiring you to put steps between the two buildings? Why don't you just make the buildings at the same grade?
The existing house, they have a grid height than, like, a ground level, three steps. You can see the, really, the picture?
Sure.
Have the steps, also, you can see from the... See this here have three steps, okay?
Yep.
So my new addition to the main existing floor need the steps, two, step, three steps to the existing floor, kitchen room.
Right. Why is that preferable than just having... You'd save room in that small addition if you didn't have steps, because they take up three feet.
Because I don't want to raise high my floor, like, a subfloor high three steps, so I rather than take the step from the, like, called a split floor, normally, house have that condition.
You're saying this is the...
This means not real, only this, my brother just want to show the picture, what it looks like, but...
Can you put this over?
Sure. This is not a real one, just show the image looks like.
Right.
Just give me a second, and this is the real picture.
Do we have any other questions? I'm sorry? Yes, we have that in our packet.
Yeah, I'm still confused too about the plan itself. In the existing driveway side view, I can see where the addition was made, so is this addition you're gonna do... Is it gonna be attached to that, or does it... Are you gonna demolish that? Because you're doing a first and second floor addition, so according to the... I'll show you the pictures.
Yep.
You should try and talk so that we can all hear.
Sorry. So I don't see the... I don't see where the old addition is. Are you gonna demolish the old addition?
No, this is the new addition here.
The new addition is a two-story thing to the east.
This here already, one floor already there. Right here, yeah, here already. This is already, just nine foot wide, that's already.
Okay.
So the new addition part will have to at the second floor, so come to, come to for zoning permit. So that's clear, explain?
Not really. Does everyone else understand?
No, I don't understand. Who... Can I ask who made these renderings?
This white is... So I'll give you the...
But just looking at this, I mean, steps, there's a code issue. I mean, does engineering look at these? Because these steps are way more...
This is my professional...
Okay.
Looks not real.
Yeah, I mean, these step risers, look, they're about like 10 inches, which is not... Which is way out of code.
So we are starting the plan, and after give the details, I'll... That's the real, that's for the mention for people who have that, that...
Those step risers still look exceedingly high. Can't see...
Ma'am, did your architect prepare the images that you have attached?
No, this I have prepared. My architect didn't have time to make the final inside.
Uh-huh.
Final heat this much, so I have to prepare this part.
Right.
But I mean, the thing we were mainly concerned with was entrance to this building, not through the basement.
Right, yeah.
Right.
That has been taken care of. We did discuss at the last meeting the problem of having steps and the space that they took.
Correct, yeah.
But this apparently is still the architect's solution.
Okay.
And I believe there's nothing illegal in wasting space.
Okay.
But ma'am, you...
When I go to Princeton, they have three big steps coming down from the kitchen.
Right, right, okay.
I understand.
Well, why don't we label this for you, Exhibit A1, these images that... Of the steps?
Okay, this is not real one. My brother help me to show me what the steps looks like. When the architect give a rubber early, because this month, like, 14th, my architect just finish the face, so I give the picture, you know, thing without section details. So just why I want people to see at least know what the spec from my new addition to new floor, but not the four floors, only three steps.
All right, so you prepared these on the computer?
Yes.
With your brother's help?
Yes.
Okay.
Derek, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
If we were to approve this, can we approve it as a single-family home period, without any rental?
Well, I mean, that is what it is now. There's nothing to preclude somebody from renting out a single-family home. You know, I think it looks more like a single-family home than it did before, but that's something we'll have to catch with enforcement if it becomes an issue in the future.
But it would be an enforcement question, not something that we could impose.
Right, I mean, I don't think you can... The only thing that's permitted in the zone is a single-family house, so...
Okay. But in principle, that single-family house can be rented to somebody else as a single-family home.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Okay. One question. Would it be able to be subdivided to make it into two rentals under a zoning ordinance the way it is?
Not currently, no. You're only allowed permitted use as a, or as a single-family house, or a single-family house where the owner lives in either the main house or a flat, and you're allowed to have a flat in that situation.
But then the applicant, we need to make an application for...
Formal application, yes, ma'am.
Do we have any further comments or questions? Do I have a motion as to what we should do?
Can you talk?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sleepy this evening. Are there any members of the audience who are here to address this case? Excuse me. I see nobody raising an anxious hand. Okay. So then I'll... Do we have a motion on this application?
Can we talk about it?
Do you want to make a motion?
No. Should we talk about it first, or...
I move, we approve the application.
Yeah, just for clarification, as a C1 hardship, and if so, what does the Board perceive the hardship to be then? I understand the applicant...
This is a C1, is it?
Well, that's what the applicant's asking for, so I'm saying for the purposes of your vote tonight, is it because of the lot area and the lot depth being undersized?
It's a very small lot, I think. I would think. Going up rather than out, please. So we have a motion? Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Did I see a second?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear. Yeah, okay. Shall we have a motion and a second? I would like to append my normal exterior lighting and drainage conditions to the granting of the variance, if that's what happened. Could you coldly roll for us, and Tordia?
Ms. Coulson? Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mrs. Schreiber?
Yes.
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Lambrose?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yes.
Thank you, it's approved.
You can go and construct a new single-family.
Oh, thank you so much, I am with her. Thanks, bye.
Good, thank you very much. The next case is 30 Van de Venter Avenue and carries the case number Z-1818-628. And I understand Mr. Tar was here rehearsing early, so we'll ask Mr. Bridger to read us the essence of his memorandum and then offer you the...
Mr. Bridger, before you read your memo, I'll note for the record that the noticing is in order and the Board has jurisdiction.
Thank you, Karen. Mary Hamel is the owner and applicant of 30 Van de Venner Avenue and seeking C1 and C2 variance relief to permit construction of a parking space in exception to required front and side yard setbacks. Properties located in R4 zone in the former Princeton boroughs and is subject to the Use in Bulk Regulations in accordance with 17A253 and 257. Existing single-family use is permitted as a right. Subject property's noncomplying with regard to lot width requirement 60 feet, the lot width is 41.5, and it's also noncomplying with the smaller side yard setback requirement 8, the existing is 1.5. It's noncomplying with the combined side yard setback requirement of 20, the combined side yard setback is six and a half feet, and it's noncompliant with the parking requirement. There's one space required. Applicant is proposing to construct a nine-by-18 parking space along the southern property line of the subject property in the front, starting at the curb cut and going into the property, will consist of two strips 42 feet long, two one-foot strips. In accordance with Section 17A387C, parking spaces are not permitted within the front yard setback. It must be setback at least four feet from a property line. The proposed parking space requires the following variances. The front yard setback's 25, this setback is 24, and it has a one-foot setback whereas a four-foot setback is required. I would note that there are two mature trees that will be impacted by the proposed driveway. The narrow parking strips are a sensitive design technique that will limit the area disturbance, but will need to be... They will need to cut into the existing grade, causing potential harm to the trees. The applicant should address the impact of the trees, and the applicant will be required to apply and obtain a road opening permit from the municipal engineer to permit the driveway construction. This will result... In the memo, it says one or two parking meters. It looks like it may be one, just one parking meter space on the street. Van de Venner was reconstructed in 2014, and there's currently a five-year moratorium, and the applicant will need to coordinate with the municipal engineer if the application is approved regarding pavement restoration requirements, and they've requested consideration under both the C1 and the C2 criteria. That's my memo. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to address them.
Do we have any questions from Mr. Bridger?
Yeah, when you say potential harm to the trees, does that... Does that mean they may or may not survive, or do they need to be cut down?
I'm sorry.
The harm to the trees, does that mean that they need to be cut down, or does that mean that they may be...
It's hard to say. I mean, you know, the two paper strips are a sensitive way to do it. I just... You have to put a base under them, and, you know, it's just...
You're thinking of damage to the trees.
Yeah, damage to the root system of the trees. It's close, and it's just a tight spot on that side, and I just note it as a caution.
Thank you.
Is that okay?
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Tar?
Good evening. I'm Chris Tar, representing Ms. Hamel, and Ryan Kennedy is to my right, is gonna help us with the slides. We're told that you can see our slides on your screens, but that they don't show on the...
They don't show on the main one? I see nothing on my screen yet, but that may... Ah, yes, I see a house.
Yeah.
With 30 Van de Venner written underneath.
Yes, so what we've done is that we brought along a couple of extra sets of those slides, and I put them on the podium. If anyone in the audience would like to follow along that way, there are several folks here with us, but if anybody would like to, I just wanted to make clear that it's a problem with the equipment. We're not trying to hide anything.
I understand.
So if the two of us could be sworn, we're ready to go.
Sure. Just swear affirm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful.
I do.
Thank you.
So Mary's gonna start off and go through the slides with you and explain the nature of her application.
Mr. Tar, are these collectively A1?
That's fine, thank you. The green light, there you go.
Hello, I'm Mary Hamel, and this picture is of my house. I bought the house five years ago and renovated it for our retirement years, I thought. We lived in it until a couple months ago, when we moved out and went to live in a Princeton house that has parking. We had tried for more than six months to sell it, but we didn't get a single offer. The Realtor says nobody wants it without a parking space. I understand. I'll show you. As you see at the arrow on slide number two, I have a narrow lot, especially compared with my neighbors. My immediate Spring Street neighbor has two lots, one next to mine and another around the corner behind mine, plenty of frontage. Similarly, on the other side, my uphill neighbor with a mortuary has three lots with plenty of frontage. Slide three, as you see here, my immediate neighbors also have abundant onsite parking room. My Spring Street neighbor owns the two large houses with multiple tenants who use his parking lot between his two houses, plus the asphalt driveway that abuts the rear of my back garden. On the other side, my mortuary neighbor has a huge parking lot for his many tenants and his business. In addition, when needed, he frequently puts bags on all but two of the meters on the block. I did ask each of my immediate neighbors about granting me an easement so I could cross over their land and park in the rear of my house, but they said no. On slide four, you can see the whole length of the street, showing houses with and without driveways. With is everybody else, without is me. Slide five, this shows the situation about street parking on the entire street. On my side, every single space has a meter. Across the street, on the other side, no parking is allowed. So I have slim pickings, and I don't want to come to this, the slide that you see in this picture from a year ago, of the car whose door was totally smashed right in front of our house when the driver had just parked and was just about to step out. In a millisecond, it could have been him, or if it was my car at that moment, it could have been me. I can tell you from years of experience that my parking situation is untenable and dangerous. Briefly, here's how it goes. Mostly, I walk. My job is directing the art gallery at the Woodrow Wilson School just up the street, but I can't walk to the supermarket, or the hardware, or the train station, or the hospital, so I have a car. Now, you know what it's like when you're in your car and you want to drop off some dry cleaning or pick up a loaf of bread, and you try to park near the store and you can't, so you go a little farther, and then you go around the block and you still can't find a place, and then you go around the next block and you still can't find a place, and you finally decide, okay, I just have to give up and go home. Well, that's how it is for me, except what I'm trying to do is to park at my home. So I go around the block and I look for space, and I can't find space, and I end up parking far from my house. That is increasingly unsatisfactory. Sometimes it's even worse than that, it's dark, it's snowy, it's icy, and I'm walking far from my car to get to my house. And then there's a scenario whereby I'm coming home and I have things in my car, like a bag of groceries, and then I have to carry them. Often, that's too far for me to carry them, so then I need a place to put my car while I unload things from the car into my house. Double parking in front of the house on this busy avenue and getting out of the car and unloading it is dangerous, and at the rush hours, it can seriously block the traffic on this street. Or, let's suppose it's a favorable time on the block. The meters have not been bagged by the funeral parlor, the spaces are not 100% taken. I find a spot, so that's great. For how long? Two or three hours. By the prevailing rules, up until this month, I would then go out when the meter expired, and I would feed the meter, move to another spot if I... and I would feed the meter, move to another spot if I could find one, feed that meter, and go out again in another couple of hours. But now, I can no longer even do that because by the new rules, when the meter expires, you're not allowed to return to parking on that block until the next day. So this is absolutely outrageously impossible. So sometimes I try a car service. And frankly, they have more trouble than I do because they can't negotiate the limitations either. There's no safe spot for them to discharge me. There's no driveway for them to turn into. I say, well, turn into the neighbor's driveway. And they say, no, because they don't really want to be violating the neighbor's space. Or I say, well, you know, just double park. And they say, no, I don't want to be blocking the traffic because it's their job. So it's even harder on them. This is not viable. A person needs to have reasonable access to their own house, and I don't have it. So this slide is in my neighborhood. I would like a driveway with a parking space onsite like other people in my neighborhood. I'm not the only one who doesn't have room to drive to the back of my house. All these pictures with cars parked near the front are from my street or from one street over on one day. Slide seven, the next one. This picture shows my front and side yard on the left. As you see, there's no room to get by that bay window and get to the back of my lot. So the best thing we can do is make a small car aisle going up to that bay window. Some kind of drive that's environmentally sensitive and that is aesthetically sensitive. So slide eight shows you what we have in mind. That brick walkway that's currently there can be repurposed. It's two feet wide. And instead of having a two-foot wide brick walkway, I'd like to have the bricks separated out into two ribbons. So there'd be a driveway and parking space created by placing the bricks as two narrow ribbons like tire tracks. Each ribbon being just one foot wide. And in between the ribbons, there'll be grass. That would take the car right up to the bay window. And the rectangle that is available is 10 feet by 20 feet. So that when you drive the car up to the bay window, none of it is sticking out into the front yard. It's all hidden at the edge of the house and the porch. And in that space that's 10 by 20, we do have a legal parking space nine by 18 that would fit in there. And even better than that, a typical car is really smaller than that. It's about six by 15. And obviously, that fits fine, too.
I'll confirm that we looked on the internet and that's what it tells us. The average car length and car width are in America today.
So slide 10 tells you about the two variances that are needed. So one of them would be for the lengthwise, we're one foot short in terms of nearness to the front sidewalk. And the other one is sideways, the parking space is very near to my lot line. So what to do? Lengthwise, we're stuck, though it's just by one foot. But widthwise, we propose trying to put a little more distance between the driveway and the near neighbor by locating these ribbons of bricks non-centrally. In other words, we smoosh them over away from the lot line and toward the house. Currently, the outer edge of the brick walkway is 24 inches from the lot line, and we could make that even a little bit better, even if just by a matter of inches. We've got a 10-foot width available. A real car is really six feet wide. And so we could have just about four feet free along the side in practical terms. So that's not perfect, I know, but we have to do something. A century ago, living in this house was okay, but in today's world, it's not. And it's dangerous for me or whoever would live in the house in these days. Thank you.
So to confirm, technically speaking, the two variances are, the, one is for the side yard where four feet are required up to the edge of the parking space. And the other, we look at it in the alternative. Either it's a one-foot front yard setback or it's a shortening of the 18-foot required stall by one foot to make it a 17-foot parking stall, in which case you have a 25-foot yard. In other words, if you add them together, the front edge of that bay window as it comes out is 42 feet away from the front property line. You need 25 feet of front yard setback and then you have to have a car space. We did the research and found out cars are 15.4 feet long, not 18 feet long. And so the car could, it could go bump right up against the foundation of the house and be out of the front yard. And we prefer to look at the variance as that, a shortening of the car space by one foot. And as Ms. Hamel pointed out, she proposes to slide the bricks over toward the house and away from her neighbor to be as sensitive as she can, about the four feet that are supposed to be over there. But we see this as predominantly a C1 variance where she has an acute hardship that's unlike anybody else on the Vandy Venner. If you could look at it as a C2 where it's really better urban design or residential design to have a driveway that's off the street on such a busy thoroughfare. So that's the presentation. And we've got some neighbors who want to come and speak, but if there are questions of Ms. Hamel, we'd be happy to take them now.
In some senses, you know, 17 feet is 17 feet and the car is shorter than that. And there is, since there's no clearly marked parking space, it's not evident that, you know, what really the parking size is. The 18 or 19 feet is really so it can be on a curb and you can pull in and you can pull out without smashing your car or the car's fore and aft.
Right.
It seems to me the biggest problem from a practical viewpoint of trying to use the space is getting out of the car with the side, it's a rough hedge-like thing in that location. Have you considered putting a fence down there, which in principle would give you additional, not zoning space, but certainly space for getting in and out of the vehicle? And it would certainly shield the neighbors.
Mary knows the vegetation that's there. Is that an impediment?
Is that yours or that?
The little bushes that are there to the, between the homes, would that be, make it hard to open the door?
No, the hedge is exactly on the property line and it's not hard.
It's not sure.
Hmm? It is. I mean, there is, the hedge really is exactly on the property line. It's a private hedge. It's been there for decades.
Yeah.
And, yeah.
But it'd be, you know, you'd have to take it down to put up a fence and your thinking is it's not difficult if you were to open a car door into a private hedge?
Yeah, I'm happy to do whatever is wanted with respect to that spot. I personally like, I like vegetation. I think it's flexible. I think it's attractive. My own idea is to underplant that private hedge actually so that it's got more private coming up at the base of it. Yeah.
But I think having a decent barrier between the car and the neighboring property reduces the impact on that property.
That would be fine, yeah. And I guess I would, because the trees were raised a little while ago, I will say that I had, did speak with the, not the current arborist, but the arborist who preceded him. I spoke four years ago with him and was told that the large tree is so deeply rooted that it would not be harmed by this kind of work.
I don't want to overlook the wonderful slide that Mary prepared with Photoshop, number 11 that you'll see on your screen. It's show the, her proposed brick paver driveway. So that's how she sees, envisions this, this project.
So I have a question. So if we were to approve this today, you'd still have to go to the municipal engineer in order to then be able to have permission to take away, that would take away a parking space?
We need a road opening permit, which then would entail sliding the spaces. Mary's measured them. They're 23 feet long. They fit 22 feet, they fit. But we would need to get a permit from the engineer.
But then, but the municipality would actually lose one metered parking space? Or it's not?
We've studied that. We've studied that.
It's unclear. And the engineer and I did speak, but the facts are, am I, shall I say what my understanding is?
Go right ahead.
Okay, so my understanding is that if you started our property line and you go down to Spring Street.
There's a slide up on your screen that you're going to see some red markings as we talk here.
Oh, yeah. So if you go from my property line to Spring Street, it's a little over 47 feet to the curb, and that's what he said is the marker. So that, and then you need, the first 25 feet is for visibility. And then the next 22 feet, there's your parking spot. That's one. Okay, then you give me a 10-foot curb cut. So now we're going from that boundary up the hill the other direction.
Okay.
After you cut, after you give me a 10-feet curb cut, you've got 92 running feet up to the next guy's curb cut. In those 92 feet, you could put 22-foot parking spaces times four. You get 88 feet of parking spaces out of those 92 feet.
You're moving the parking spaces back to the other driveway that comes out through the.
Yeah, the current parking spaces.
You want a decent 45-degree sort of view from there, certainly. I think that's pushing it.
Well, by our count, you'd lose none. But if it was a safety issue, you would lose one.
Yeah, I think, it appears you could do it with the loss of one parking.
We did talk to Mr. West about it and he's confirmed the 22-foot length of the space and the issue then is the distance to the corner of Spring Street, what's a good sightline.
Just from a practical standpoint, if we're going to lose one parking space anyway, would it not have made sense maybe, I don't know if this is possible, to have just gotten a, like a space there for you with a permit? Did you try that?
Those meters where you put money in?
Yeah, but.
No, no, no.
If we're going to lose one anyway.
Not available.
But they're receptive to taking away a parking space?
They're metered. They're revenue source.
I know.
Not available.
So what, so I'm still not clear. How would they be able to keep that one space where the, where the entrance to the driveway would be? You think they'll push it back and move the meters?
Yeah, so currently, currently the five spa, there are five spaces, there are five spaces in the, in the span. And one of them could go to the right, down towards Spring Street. And then four more could go up towards the mortuary if, depending upon how close you want to come to the next curb cut. But people do come as close as one foot. And I've got 88, got four feet to spare. 88 to 94, 92, six feet to spare. 94, yeah, six feet to spare. So if you did, currently, they're longer than, some of them are longer than 22 feet. It's kind of casually and generously laid out. Anyway.
But it sounds like getting a permit is not as of right. That's correct. But you've, you seem to be optimistic that you're going to.
It's a two-step process.
So it's up to the engineer.
Exactly.
Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address this case? Would you come to the microphone? You'll have to tell us who you are and swear to be truthful. Attorney will see to that. Should have a button on it.
Oh, it's not working. My name is Mateen. I own the property on the side, 28 Vandy Venner Avenue.
Sir, before you continue, if you would raise your right hand, we could swear you. And you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful.
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
Now, I must express I was surprised that my neighbors are so jealous of me that I have more land than them and this. But anyway, some of the statements which are made to gain your sympathy are not correct. And I'm going to say on her face. She was told repeatedly by the seller when she was buying that house, by me, by the real estate agent, there is no parking, there is no hope of getting a parking here. And she knowingly purchased that price because she negotiated it down from the seller and she said, I can afford it, I can do it. And she was, argument was that I liked the idea that it is a town where I can walk to every facility, so I don't need the car. Now, she's using the other argument, which I find it very funny. Regardless of that, the thing that I don't like and express, I have six objections. The one-foot clearance, as is presented in this one, from my property to the car that he's asking, and he's asked for that thing, from four feet to one foot. In one-foot clearance, my dear friends, you cannot open a car door and come out of the car. Unless you are a midget or you are an acrobat, you come out of the window. One foot is not enough clearance. Secondly, a man or a woman is more than one foot wide. Even if you come out of the car by magical ways, how would you walk along this side without trespassing on my land? There is no space. She's talking of the dangers of parking and so on? Tell me, when you drive back, if you come in on side, then you have to pull it back and go on the busy street where people are walking on the sidewalk, cars are running out. Then you have to come out and you are also in a hazardous situation. So the hazards she crying about are the hazard in the plan. I don't think, especially in the winter, when you warm up the car, the fumes that will come out, where will they go? On both sides of where the car would be parked are the hive walls of the two houses, her house and my house. Now, how does the smoke goes? It goes up and it flares up like a flower. Now, there's no space to flare it up, so it will go into the bedrooms of the two houses. It is hazardous. So what is the solution? There are solutions. It is just that they do not prefer to utilize them. They can make a very good parking circular driveway in the front of the house and still keep the trees. I don't understand what motivates her, her attorney, engineer, to do this. She has, from the very beginning when she has bought, harked on me after buying it. When everybody told her, this is no chance of parking, she bought it. Then she said, you give me the easy way. I said, I cannot give. This is not right. And she said, okay. And how much she wanted to pay? $300. I said, my house will reduce to half the value. How can I give that? But regardless of that, I don't want to bias you against her, but I do think that all her grievances are her own doing against the sincere advices by the professionals and others and neighbors. Even the seller explained very clearly, nobody deceived her. Now, just because, I mean, I will say, the governor of New Jersey lives in such a big house and I have such a small house, what is the point in being jealous of it? I paid for every inch of the property that I own. So.
Thank you very much.
Well, I personally, I will say one very simple thing. There is a better solution available. Why do this? Is it because she wants to do it after me? Or is it? Is it because she wants to do it after me, or is it because she has not thought of that? A circular driveway in the front of her house, there's enough space between the footsteps going into the porch and the sidewalk.
Does it need another location for the vehicle, if I understand?
No, you can still park on the driveway in the front of the house, many properties have been given that permission, and they are using it.
Okay, fine.
I see them.
I think you've made the case adequately. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else who wishes, would you come forward to the microphone and go through the same ritual?
You are asking me?
Hi, I'm Tina Clement, I live at 13 Vandeventer Avenue.
Ms. Clement, do you swear affirm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
Yes, it will.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanna express a hardship of parking on Vandeventer, especially now with the way they've changed the meters. She's right, I can't even have company come, and I do have parking, I have a two-car parking, but it's still a hardship if you have a friend, if you have a serviceman, no matter what you have, so I totally sympathize and believe in her hardship and hope that you will consider that, because it is very difficult. So, thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to address the case? I'm sorry, I didn't see you, please come.
My name is John McGoldrick, 25 Vandeventer.
Mr. McGoldrick, do you swear affirm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
The, I'm here to support the application. For a long time, I and many of my neighbors have been very assiduous about keeping the character of that big block, not so big, of Vandeventer Avenue. It is, it is a place which is a residential place with a couple of exceptions, one, very unfortunate one, recently, when the other board granted relief, not in an apt comparison with this one, but it's not residential, it's, I don't know what you call it, it's some form of non-residential structure. In any event, it's very important to me and to others on the block that we maintain the residential character of the block, and it is a delicate thing, because it's a complicated block. This case that this applicant makes strikes me as being particularly apt for relief. She simply does not have any other choice. Every other house on the block has a choice, and it's, we use it, but she doesn't, without relief. And so I think the need is very clear in this case, and it does not interfere with the central residential nature of that block. It's a fragile thing to maintain right in the middle of town, the blocks that do exist. If this one went, it's imaginable that the next block over would go, and we would lose the residential character of that part of town, and that is, I think, the most important aspect of this. But this is a singular case, nobody else on this block faces this problem. I think it's a genuine hardship, I think when people come to you claiming hardship, I often look at it askance, because the statute really doesn't attend to many of the so-called hardship, hardships that people claim. This one is real, I think you should grant it.
Thank you very much. Did I miss anyone else you wish to come forward as well?
Hi, Tom Kenny, 33 Vandeventer.
Sir, do you swear affirm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
It's not an ideal situation, but I am also here in support of the application. I wish there was an alternative, but I also think the hardship is real, and I think what John has said, what Tina has said, I just support the application, thanks.
Thank you very much.
I'm Barbara Blackwell, and I live in Princeton, I was born in Princeton, I've lived here my whole life, I've watched everything for the last 70 years.
Ms. Blackwell, before you continue, if we could swear in, do you swear affirm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
It will.
Thank you.
I was Mary's Realtor for six months, I'm with Callaway, Henderson, Sotheby's, we priced it to sell based on all the other houses that were similar in the borough, the old borough, and we put it on optimistically, all the agents thought it was great, all the buyers thought, "I can't live here, it does not have parking." We tried a price reduction, it still didn't sell. Every time I showed it, I would park on the next block in hopes that there would be a meter in front of the house. Half the time, I did a public open house on Princeton Reunion's weekend, there was a funeral that day, all but one meter was covered with a bag, there was really no place, you know, except for a walk-in, that somebody could come to the open house. And, you know, people see that, and they say, "How can I live there? I can't possibly live there." And Mary bought the house, loving the history of the house, she spent hundreds of thousands of dollars improving its mechanical systems, its roof, adding air conditioning, putting, she tore out the whole back garden, made a beautiful perennial garden, all natural, she loves her trees. I kept asking her to cut down a few trees in the front so I could get a decent picture of the house, and she wouldn't do it. So she was the perfect owner for this house, she loved it, it was built in like 1904. The alternative, if she does not have parking, I'm not gonna be able to sell the house. The alternative is a builder will buy it and tear it down. I mean, is that what the borough wants? They can get parking if they tear it down, and I just don't think that's fair, that's not what we're looking for in Princeton. Thank you.
Thank you. You've had your go. Is there anyone else who wishes to make a comment? Please, if you would.
My name's Yang Wei, I live next to their house, I live at 32 Vandeventer.
Sir, before you continue, if we could swear in, do you swear affirm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
And I witness on a very frequent basis that it's very inconvenient not to have a parking space next to the house, and I can, people come and go, that is a busy street, and I cannot imagine how difficult it's going to be for whoever occupies that house in the future. And I have observed, just in my own opinion, that, the lady mentioned there will be a meter taken out, probably, that would be a cost to Princeton, but in my mind, just in my opinion, if they can sell the house at the price that's marketable, that's high enough, Princeton will get the money back from the property tax, and that's my observation I want to add, and I firmly support for, in architect's view, if the parking lot is possible on the side or even in front, I support that decision, thank you.
Thank you very much. Was there somebody else over there who wanted?
Hi, I'm Holly Fuller, I've worked for John and, I'm Mary's partner, and Mary for about three years.
Do you swear affirm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
I've worked for John for about three years now, and we worked upstairs in his office space where we would frequently have to set our alarms to make sure that we were able to run down and feed the meter in time, which I now know is illegal. And I've also spent time driving around several times to find a parking spot, and I definitely agree with Mary's sentiments that it's incredibly dangerous, especially when there's a funeral going on, to be circling the streets and not have a place to park, and also to feel like you're in the way of other people, and that you might get hurt trying to get in and out of your car there. Having heard this man's testimony, I, the word fumes is just ridiculous to think that that should even be brought up. It's a beautiful house that really has been taken care of well by Mary and John, and should not be ripped down to put a ugly parking lot there. There's definitely something that can be done here, and I just wanna say that I agree with Mary's sentiments, so, that's it.
Thank you. Have we seen everyone? You've had a chance, I think you made a very clear case. Mr. Tar, oh, sorry, are you coming?
Yes, my name is John Neal, and I swear to tell the truth.
All right, Mr. Neal, and your address?
I'm Mary's partner.
Oh, okay, sorry.
And when we bought the house five years ago, quite frankly, things were different, as I'm sure you're aware of, the increased traffic in general in Princeton has really created a big problem, and parking obviously is a manifestation of that. The change of the traffic light up at Vandeventer and Nassau to a three-way has, you know, packed cars up tremendously, and so I think that the conditions under which we were living five years ago have significantly changed, and thank you for your consideration of this issue, and I am in support, obviously, of the proposed changes and following exactly that plan.
Can I ask a question? Was that your assistant that spoke earlier?
Yes.
And she said a business was being run out of the second floor? Is that, could you elaborate on that?
I'm a retired physician, and so I do consulting work, but there's no actual business address there, no, it's a residence, and I have an office.
All right. You're not allowed to have employees as a home occupation, so...
He doesn't live there now, so if it was a mistake...
All right, I was gonna ask if they live there still, so...
Have we seen everyone that wishes to make their first statement?
No, that's it.
Okay, I think we've dealt with that. Do you wish to make a summary of anything that has been said?
I think our neighbors summarized it very well.
Okay.
Mr. Tar, just a quick question, I was asking the zoning officer, and then we thought we'd ask you. Ms. Hamel is the owner, correct?
Correct.
Okay, but the application indicates Enrisin America LLC doing business as Shiri Cafe is the applicant, is that right? That's what it says.
That's the coffee and tea. That's a typo.
That's a mistake.
It's a different application on a different form.
Okay, so it's Ms. Hamel is the owner, the applicant, okay.
There's a coffee shop down the street, I think. Sorry about that, it's our fault.
Okay, so we'll go into executive session. What are your thoughts?
I have one question about, I guess enforcement having to do with the, this, the length of it implies that two cars could park in that area, and I, I'm thinking not just now, but future owners, but including now, would, would we want, would we need to condition it as a one-car parking space? And would that be a problem in terms of enforcement?
No, that would be what it is, it is a one-car parking space, I mean, I think it should be disclosures added upon the sales to people, so two cars can't park there, because that's most likely what'll happen.
You know, consistent with that, that it is problematic, you know, if somebody has a long driveway, two cars, three cars can go towards the back, but when it deadens at the house, it will be that problem. Yeah, we're approving, if we approve a one space, which is all the statute required, you know, there'll be two cars parked in there, but people do that anyway, even when they have a long driveway, it's just hard to police, but...
I'm sure you're not supposed to do that.
Yeah, but, you know, if we approve it, we're approving, you only have capacity for one car, and understand that. Other than that, I think it's an interesting case, we'll have people come before us on other cases, talking about the parking rules are too restrictive, and living downtown, we don't need a car, so why don't you give us a variance, because we won't need it. The reality is, most people have cars, and at least one, and I can imagine you probably did have that position when you bought the house, but...
And I only have one car.
Yeah, and you bought a house without a driveway. I'm just saying, it's, you had good intentions, I'm sure.
Any other phone now? I'm sorry, you want to... So you've made a motion to approve?
If I may, yeah, okay.
You've made, you've seconded that motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, question, just for purposes of the resolution, is this being proposed as a C1 because of the dimensions or the configuration of the lot, or are you approving it as a C2, which the best way to summarize would be just a better zoning alternative for the property?
You're saying the C2 is the better?
No, no, I'm saying a C2 variance generally, if we had to characterize what that is, you could grant that even if there is no hardship to the owner based on the shape of the lot, the size of the lot, simply because you think it's a better alternative, zoning-wise. I'm asking because, as Mr. Floyd points out, each case is judged on its own facts, so we just wanna be clear, in this case, what was persuasive to you for this case to approve
Probably stick with the C1, I think the hardship of this particular lot size and location really cries out, so if it's a concern about someone else using the same facts, these facts are different than many other property owners in the borough, I think.
And then it would be also subject to the applicant getting the road opening permit from the municipal engineer, and I guess approval for whatever parking meters need to be eliminated if there are any. So I think that would be an appropriate condition to add to it.
I guess, I'm really not sure whether it's C1 or C2, I mean, there's so many undersized lots to bring it in under a C1. to bring it in under a C1. I mean, I believe you have another case coming before us tonight. And it's gonna be an undersized front yard, those in front of the house.
It's a front yard setback, but they too can't get to the back. But the, the C2 really just speaks about better municipal design. So either one, each one, you have to look at each case on its own merits.
Yeah. And, you know, I'm considering whether in this proposal, it would violate the front yard setback by one foot, which a lot of other applications will violate it by more than that.
Right.
So I don't know what to recommend. I'm leaning towards supporting a C2, but I almost would look to staff on which more defense...
It would have seemed to me that a C1 was speaking properly to this particular law.
If that, but not, so as not to set a precedent. I guess Mr. Floyd's struggling with what would set a bigger precedent.
Yeah, I, yeah. Sixty percent of the applications come before us. They're undersized, narrow. So that's kind of a tough one.
Right.
Well, but, but each case is gonna present its own facts. In this case, the applicant cannot get a parking permit to park on the street there. At least, that's my understanding from Mr. Bridger. So that's not available to her, where it might be available to another applicant. So I think if you rely on this as a C2, remember, it's supposed to advance the purposes of zoning. And you could probably make that argument now for any application coming into you for parking. Of course, everyone's gonna say, yes, it increases the enjoyment on my property. You know, population densities, all the purposes of zoning. I think it may be more appropriate to rely on the C1 hardship, but on these specific facts that we will describe in the resolution.
Okay, thank you.
So I guess we have a motion, and a second up. We've had discussion. Is there any need for further discussion? So could you call the roll then, podium?
Ms. Coulson? Yes. Mr. Davids?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mrs. Striver?
Yes.
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Lambros?
Yes.
Chairman Royce?
Yes.
Thank you, is approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Good luck.
Good luck.
All right. So 22 Henderson Avenue is being carried to the 12th of December. And so our next case is 394 Ridgeview Road, which carries the case number Z1818652. Okay. So I am going to get Mr. Bridger to read the essence of his memorandum into the record, and then I'll ask you to present your case.
Mr. Bridger, I'll note that the noticing is in order, and the board has jurisdiction to hear this.
Good. Mr. Bridger, when you're ready.
Thank you, sir. Ridgeview Properties LLC is the owner and applicant. They're seeking variance relief for 394 Ridgeview Road to permit construction of a new single-family home on a non-conforming lot. The property does not meet the minimum required lot area. Property's in the RA zone. And is subject to use in bulk regulations in accordance with Sections 10B 253, 255, and 246. The existing site is vacant. The proposed single-family use is permitted use. The subject lot is non-complying with respect to the required four-acre lot area. It has a three-acre lot area. Applicant should advise the board where they approached any adjoining lot owners to either purchase land to make the subject lot a complying lot or offered to sell the subject lot. I will note that this property was subdivided in 1980 to two complying lots at that time. In intervening years, the ordinance was changed to go to a four-acre zone instead of a three-acre zone. In 2003, there was another application for this property, the same as the one that's before the board this evening, to permit construction on an undersized lot. That was approved. It's my understanding the house was never constructed. So that's the background on the case. They've requested the C1 hardship variance. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to address them.
Do you have another question, Mr. Neal? No. Okay. Sir, you can start making your case.
Okay. This better? Yes. My name is John Dumont, and I'm the attorney for the applicant here, which is Ridgeview Properties LLC. Now, this property is located at 394 Ridgeview Road, which obviously used to be part of township, now the municipality. What Derek said with regard to this, the history of this application is correct. The original property was purchased by the Lettys, Dr. Joe Letty, maybe some of you know who he was. He was an orthopedic surgeon in Princeton. They purchased this property in 1976. It was a vacant lot at the time. They held the property for a few years. And then in 1980, they did subdivide the property into three lots. And those lots were conforming at that time. The planning board approved the subdivision and gave the approvals in 2003. A variance was granted for this particular lot to make it a buildable lot, even though it was only three acres. The zoning had been changed to four acres. So tonight, the issue is, we have a three-acre lot now, which was made non-conforming by a change in the zoning ordinance of the municipality at the time. This lot has been deemed a buildable lot by the municipality ever since it was subdivided. And it is now our proposal to build a single-family home on this property. We have all the, I'm gonna ask our engineer to tell you the permits and the history of this lot in terms of its utility as a single-family residence. So at this point, I'd like to ask Frank Falcone to be sworn in and give your professional qualifications.
Mr. Falcone, you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
Frank Falcone, I'm a licensed professional planner and licensed land surveyor in the state of New Jersey. Can you use the microphone?
No, the portable one.
I am, I am very familiar with this lot. I have worked for the previous owner, Mr. Letty, over the years with proposed development plans, which never really took place.
Mr. Falcone, does the board accept Mr. Falcone as an expert in surveying and planning?
As Mr. Dumont adequately described, we have a three-acre lot. It fronts on Ridgeview Road, the south side of Ridgeview Road, approximately 570 feet east of the intersection with the Great Road. Topographically, Ridgeview Road is the High Point, and the lot grade straight to the south to a stream that runs along a sewer trunk line. As Mr. Dumont also said, that the lot is subject to a lot of environmentally sensitive areas. There are freshwater wetlands extensive, and it is totally inside what's called the 300-foot riparian buffer zone. The stream in the back is a C1 stream, category one stream, which carries a 300-foot buffer. The Lettys went ahead and hired an environmental firm to get permitting from the Department of Environmental Protection. And I guess we should mark this exhibit, Karen? Call this A1. It's a site plan rendering. And I'm gonna flip this over and, or go to another exhibit, actually. I'll call this A2. It's a larger-scale site plan rendering. And basically, again, in the highlighted yellow is the area that the DEP has granted variances for disturbance. No disturbance can take place outside the yellow area. There is a freshwater wetlands permit. There is a permit for freshwater wetland transition area averaging. And then there's a, what they call a flood hazard permit, because this falls under the Flood Hazard Act rules for the riparian buffer zone. These permits were recently granted. They are in full force. The reason for this long finger that stretches to the south is that there's an existing sewer lateral that was built, and it's gravity connection to here. When everything is said and done, a fence will have to be put around that yellow area, and no disturbance can ever take place outside that. Basically, we have field in the front and wooded area associated with the stream. The field area, or light brush, will be the only thing that'll be disturbed. There'll be no trees, will be removed to do this. Again, I was the planner when we were here in 2003, and the board saw it fit to grant the undersized lot variance. We're in the RA zone. It's part of the Princeton Bridge. It's part of the area that has environmentally sensitive areas, steep slope. This lot was created prior to the 1983 zoning change, which made it four acres. I have another exhibit. It is the Princeton tax map. The subject lot is here. This is Ridgeview Road and the Great Road. Everything with a pink dot represents a lot that's undersized. Eighty-six percent of the lots in this immediate area are undersized. The lot cannot get land from other surrounding lots without making them less conforming. There is an open space in the preserved development here that has a small, maybe 15-foot overlapping boundary line. I doubt if anybody would want to get that last acre by going through that little area. So in all practical sense, there are no way to remedy the lot size here. It's my opinion that granting this variance will not do any detriment to the zone plan or the public good. Denying this variance would just be a hardship, and not allowing them to use the lot. We did see that the DEP did grant permits to construct. It's very limited. They must stay within that. And I believe, with that said, that this lot should be able to be built upon.
If I understand you properly, the house that is proposed to be placed there will have appropriate setbacks so that it is not sort of in disagreement with where a house could in principle be put?
The...
All the setbacks and height setback ratios and so on are taken care of. And it's just the unusual lot that is causing you to be here?
That is correct. I'm sure if we had a little more area to build, we would've went in a different area. But the proposal before you this evening meets all other bulk zoning requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Can we mark that as an exhibit as well? The undersized lot?
Yeah. This'll be A3, the tax map? Basically, that's all I have.
I think that's all Mr. Falcone's testimony. Any questions from the board?
You have anyone else to talk to us?
No, we have the, depending upon the questions from the public and the board, we might, we do have other people here, but they're not scheduled to testify.
So you're not going to call any witnesses or anything until the public has had a chance to come?
Well, we're anticipating that there will be questions about the permits or the site, and so Mr. Falcone could answer those. I have here Mr. Li Ping An, who is the managing member of the LLC that owns the property. We've given you the history of the property and how it has transpired that we have a three-acre lot in the four-acre zone. So I don't think that there's anything more that we can add to the testimony.
Good, thank you. Is there anyone in the audience that is here to address this case? Okay, I see at least one pair of hands. So if you can come forward, one by one, to the microphone and be sworn in, tell us what your position is.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Just Paul Singh, 376 Ridgeview Road.
And sir, do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And actually, this is my wife, Alice. You know, it's interesting, I think, that we approach this from a, firstly, a public good perspective, and also the environmental sensitivity of the area. You know, I think, as you all know, Ridgeview is an environmentally protected area, very sensitive, has wetlands, significant wildlife. I think all of this certainly came up during the whole pipeline issue. The good thing here is, I think, everything we say, and I think all of our neighbors say, is not actually hearsay. Because Real Mart and Mr. An, who is a gentleman, I met him actually before we spoke. He's a gentleman, don't want to villainize him. But it stands to reason that we do have a case study, because Mr. An did build 410 Ridgeview Road. We do have pictures of 410 Ridgeview Road, as well as pictures of the lot under development. Both are side by side. My wife has them here, and I could certainly distribute them. Oh, thank you, Derek.
Sir, did you take these photos?
Yes.
All right, recently?
Yes, actually today, my wife did.
Okay, then, ma'am? Ma'am?
We also have a PowerPoint presentation, if that's helpful.
Okay. Ma'am, let's just swear you in too? All right? It's Alice?
Yeah, my name is Alice, and I swear to tell the truth. And a couple of the photos are older from when the previous, the building next to it was being built. But pretty much everything else was today.
All right, so we'll make this O1 for objector.
Okay, perfect. So as you can see in the photos, I mean, this is, this is a wetlands. I think the photo with the foot sort of exhibits that. You step down, water comes up. The house that Mr. An built on 410 is the other exhibit. And you can kind of see it with the sort of brutalist swimming pool picture, as I like to call it. This picture is the foundation of 410 before the house was built, and it's underwater. I mean, it was built in a wetland.
This is, 410 is not the property that's before the board tonight.
No, that's right. I agree.
Oh, well, sir, I apologize if I got the number wrong.
So you're talking of the lot next door?
Exactly. That is the house that I'm referring to. So if you'll notice also, the lot, which did have a lot of native wildlife, was clear-cut. I suspect, it's hearsay, but I suspect the resident also did not know he was buying into a wetlands, given the fact that even now, when it rains, the house is underwater. I think one of the exhibits shows that, thus showing that the drainage has, was not taken into account or does not appear to have been taken into account. You know, additionally, I think the current resident realized he didn't have any room to, you know, to place a swing set. It's also in the mud. The other thing, key consideration here is, given the disruption, this whole corridor is like the one remaining corridor on Great Road for wildlife. We've already noticed a disruption with the frogs, with, we have hawks that are in the back. back, turkeys, actually even a bobcat.
No skunk?
Excuse me?
No skunk?
No skunk, thankfully. Although, when I did tell Princeton Animal Control I saw a mountain lion, they laughed at me. So, but it's, you know, if this was a house that was potentially built into the environment or took that into consideration, or even appeared to have followed the rules, I don't know whether we'd have as many issues. But, as I mentioned, we have the case study here to show, you know, that kind of shows what the new house will be. We've had disruption already. We just don't want to compound the issue. So I ask that, at the very least, we delay this resolution so that we can have an environmental impact assessment done and just evaluate the public good argument.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You wish to come as well?
My name's Peter Payne. I'm at 415 Ridgeview Road, which is directly opposite the proposed development.
Mr. Payne, you swear or affirm any testimony you give will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
I'd just like to reiterate what Just Paul has said. I've noted on the house that is immediately to the right, when that was first going up, I was frankly gobsmacked, because there's just standing water there after every rain. And I said, you'd have to be insane to build a house there, because you'll need industrial sump pumps going 24/7 to just keep the water out of the basement. Now, I don't have any proof that they have a sump pump, but I went out this morning and looked down there, and you have the house, and you have standing water all around it. It's like a little island in the stream, if you will. And so I just wonder if this is technically not a wetland from a common sense and environmental impact standpoint. It seems to me a little misplaced to think that this, you know, this will not have any impact on the wetland and will not itself be another island in the stream in what's clearly a depressional wetland and a swale that nobody should be building on.
Let me try and understand your point. You're saying that nothing should be built on this particular lot? Is that the sort of statement you're making?
My statement is that we should, we should probably have an environmental assessment of whether building another, building in a wet, in what's clearly a wetland, makes sense from an environmental standpoint, right? That's the statement I'm making. So, I'm not a lawyer. I don't do this for business.
No, no, fine. I understand.
I'm not an engineer, but it just seems, you know-
You think in, from an environmental viewpoint, if I understand, that it would be undesirable to put a house where it is being proposed at the present time?
Yes, precisely. Why anyone would want to build a house that would essentially be surrounded by water is-
They were called castles with moats when I was-
Well, yes, but I suppose the lords of England, they were the law, subject only to the king and God, so.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else to, yes, would you do the same thing?
Hi, I'm Lincoln Hollister at 437 Ridgeview Road.
Mr. Hollister, you swear or affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Okay. I want to emphasize that the builder of the house that's sitting in this mud puddle is the same builder that's proposing to build on the lot that the applicant is discussing this evening. And so what we see is essentially an environmental disaster that was created by the same builder at the house which now has the address of 500 Ridgeview Road. Now, I happen to be a geologist. I taught at Princeton University for forty-some years. I lived in Princeton for fifty years. I've lived on the ridge for thirty years. And I have testified before the zoning board and planning board many times about many of the very reasons that the ridge is environmentally sensitive. Even though I've been teaching geology forever, and I took Bob Kaiser around and taught him about the geology of the area so that he could get an understanding of the special issues having to do with the rocky hill diabase, which is the rock that holds up the ridge. Some incredibly large number of people in town think that's just a marine or something. But it's actually, you know, very impermeable basaltic rock in a layer which dips to the north. And this wetland is sitting in a little pocket of this impermeable rock. The next, you know, if you go downstream, you go into Mountain Brook. In a way, this wetland is like the parking lot at, where the Princeton Shopping Center, you know, creates floods downstream at Harry's Brook, because there's such a big area of impermeable surface there. And we don't want that up there because of the danger of floodwaters downstream. Sorry, does anybody have any water? You want to take a pause while I get a drink of water? I don't have any trouble speaking. Thank you. So now, on the stormwater issue, you know, back when the lot was split in 1980, the zoning board specified that there should be a 20-foot wide drainage for stormwater coming off of Ridgeview Road at the current gutter under the road. Well, the town, in all its wisdom, put the low point on Ridgeview Road, not where the drain is. So when the water comes down, it puddles on Ridgeview Road and then overflows down towards the house on 500. But the house on 500 was actually built exactly across this 25-foot wide drainage, which doesn't work, thanks to the town. But it gives an idea, okay, I'm a geologist, water goes downhill. You get the idea that this new house is actually acting like a dam blocking the stormwater runoff right now into the wetlands. So we're concerned about the preservation of the wetlands, but we're deeply concerned about the interaction between the town and the builder, which has created essentially an environmental disaster up there, which was described and is shown in these photos. And we're worried, as residents up there, you know, about being protected, having our environment protected by the municipality. So we have this builder municipality interaction that created a disaster of 500, and then we have the same municipality and the same builder proposing this next house. And we think that we need some serious environmental professional reporting on here. I guess I'm never going to get water.
It's all right. You're doing a wonderful job. We're able to hear you. The microphone is working. Persevere.
Thank you. So we think there should be a pause so that we can be reassured that we're not going to compound the disaster of this wetland and the stormwater runoff situation that we have right now. Like, do not compound it. Can we please have time to get some professional reassurance in here about what the hazard is to us? So that's-
Can I ask you a question? I guess I don't understand quite what you said from a geological viewpoint, but you implied, I thought, that underneath the wetland area, there was an impermeable layer of rock which is rocky hill rock or something, I believe you called it. And the implication of what you're telling me, if I understand geography as I might have done had I studied it when I was younger, is that putting a house with a limited area, which is certainly small compared to three acres, is going to significantly impact the water going into the wetland area? Is that the point you're making?
Basically, I'm suggesting that that could happen, because that did happen on the adjacent lot where the house was permitted to be built on a place that was allegedly not in the wetland.
Okay.
And so there was a mistake made in allowing that house to be built there, because the wetland is there because the rock underneath is impermeable, and so the-
The house won't change that. If the house goes down to the rock, then the impermeability goes all the way down. I don't-
The house is sitting there in mud in the, in this wetland.
You're saying it's a barrier to water going around?
The house has made a barrier to the water that's trying to get into the wetland. You can go out there now and see the top of the water, and that is the top of the water table right now, which is not going to change. But the house itself has impeded the flow of water into the wetland, and you can see that in the-
It's an area issue, surely, that you're talking about. If you've got three acres and a 10-foot by 10-foot house, yes, I know the house is bigger than 10 feet by 10 feet, surely that will impede water flowing into the wetland. But is it significant from a geological viewpoint? The amount of water will be changed, or just the direction of its flow will be changed?
Well, I think the town should take some attention to what has happened at 500, because that's why we're worried about the new thing. Right now, if you go up there to 500, you'll see that the residents of the house have put a big play area out on the wetland. They've created an impermeable surface. They've encroached on the wetlands in spite of the fact they're not supposed to.
We've ensured that that's not happening here, because there's a fence being put around the developed part of the property.
On 500, they've gone to the other side of the fence to put up a structure which is there right now. So I'm saying, please, can we have professionals look into this? I'm not as much of a professional as I should be for addressing this issue, but I am a resident up there, and I've seen the degrading of the environment of the wetland, and I'm really worried about the continuing degradation of the stormwater runoff and the preservation of the wetlands.
I do have a question for you, just so I know. Have you gone to the town engineer regarding this application, or have you gone to DEP that determines wetland, or are you first coming to us?
I came to the zoning board and planning board offices last week.
Last week.
And by the way, I didn't personally receive, even though I'm an adjacent person here, I didn't personally receive the notice of this particular meeting.
Well, notice is-
Because the post office wouldn't deliver it.
Got noticed.
I'm not saying that the applicant was at fault, but I didn't get it, but I'm just saying that we're congested in terms of time to try and understand what's going on, and alarm bells are going off. I did go to the planning board and the zoning board and get, you know, the documents on the history of this thing. And in 2003, my wife actually spoke on about the application. Excuse me?
Did you express your concerns when you went a week ago? And if you did, would the town engineer whatever?
Oh, yeah.
I spoke with a gentleman here.
And we reviewed the engineered stormwater plan.
I did not, I'm sorry.
Say that again.
I showed him the engineered stormwater plan for 412 Ridgeview. It directs the water around the house. Obviously, there's what the conditions, they can speak to the conditions. I can't speak to the current conditions, but there was a plan that showed the water was brimmed around the house and went to the back of the property.
And I said that what is shown there is not adequate to take the water around, because you can see that by looking at it now. So there was interaction, but the time has been compressed for really trying to understand what is happening.
Thank you very much.
May I respond to what was said? I'm sorry? Is it possible that I could respond?
Yes, you can make a response if-
I have two points to make. The lot they're referring to with the mud was right next door. It was a four-acre lot. It did not come before this board, but it was subject to the exact same DEP permitting. It is very limited in its disturbance. You'll see the fence around the disturbed area. Now, that house was finished about midsummer, and it's my understanding that due to all this rain we've been having, the contractor has not been able to adequately grade it, and there's probably some puddling around. But we've had extensive rain, and it's been very difficult. Number two, people are talking about having further environmental studies. Both these lots were subject to what's called individual permits, the hardest permits to get from the DEP. And to get them, you have to do extensive environmental studies, and they were done. And at that time, the neighbors were noticed within 200 feet that these permits were being applied for. So they did have the opportunity at that particular time to find out what permits were being granted and what kind of environmental impacts they may have had. The DEP saw it fit to grant those permits. The town actually has no leverage, because the DEP will supersede them with regard to the areas that can be disturbed. They have jurisdiction over the site plan and make sure that they meet township requirements. But the DEP supersedes anything that Princeton can do. So environmental studies were done. Yes, there may be some ponding on Lot 410, which is right next door. Yes, it was the same builder, same applicant. But there needs to be some more grading work done, and that ponding will be repaired as soon as it stops raining. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, the comment about rainfall is basically anecdotal. Yes, of course, we've seen the reports, but we can't understand, I mean, there's nothing in any of the reports that would say that the house would block the stormwater runoff from Ridgeview Road, which is what it has. I don't know how much grading they're going to have to do, but-
We are not here to do DEP's job. I understand the point.
That's my point with respect to his reply, right?
With evidence given that it has been looked at to a level that the state believes is appropriate, I don't think we can do anything more than to accept those two statements, your concern and that response.
I think we can, we can understand the situation.
You want to keep on talking?
Do you want to keep on hearing me?
But you haven't had a glass of water yet.
What's that?
I thought you had finished what you needed to say. Have I misunderstood?
I think you're, I mean, if I have some water, I might be, I'm sure there are other people that want to talk.
Well, that's what I was trying to find out. Are there other people who wish to make comments on this? Yes, come, I'm sorry, I can't easily see hands unless they're moving.
Thank you. My name is Christopher-
My name is Christopher Barr. I live at 211 Ridgeview Road.
Sir, do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
So, as a resident of Ridgeview Road, I have a number of questions and concerns about the proposed development. As some of the neighbors have already raised, it's important to take into account the fact that the Princeton Ridge is an environmentally sensitive area. It has unique ecological features, unique geomorphology, and unique hydrology. The fact that it's an environmentally sensitive area requires that enhanced due diligence and additional care be taken in assessing the impacts of any development that goes in. And this is particularly important on the proposed lot, which is largely covered by wetlands, and as the gentleman indicated earlier, by a C1 stream. It provides critical habitat for reptiles and amphibians and mammals and bird species, and serves as a wildlife corridor, particularly as many of the other lots along Ridgeview Road have been fenced. And it's also important for stormwater runoff and for water quality. And so, a number of questions that come up. What steps have been taken to assess these impacts? Have the assessments been made available to neighbors who will be affected? Have they been made available to the public for review? Have they been made available for independent review by technical experts? More specifically, what risks and impacts have been identified, and has the zoning board looked at any of those? And if so, could you please inform us of what you found and what discussion was had? I think the issues with this particular lot are compounded by the fact that the same builder has developed a lot next door with a host of concerns that have been raised by many of our neighbors. And it raises the question of whether the town, or whether DEP, has assessed the impacts of that development after the construction? And have the cumulative impacts of the two developments that are being conducted side by side by the same developer been assessed? And if so, by whom? And again, have these impact assessments been made available for review by the general public or by independent experts? You indicated earlier that the town has jurisdiction over the site plan, and that's absolutely correct. And specifically, the zoning board, the town zoning code requires that four acres be available for construction of a home. The owner was aware of this at the time of purchase and assumed the risk when he purchased the lot. And our understanding is that Princeton has no obligation to accommodate a request for a variance following the transfer of ownership. And if these rules are in place, what are they there for if they're not going to be enforced? And then finally, as we're talking about permits and variance that have been issued by DEP, I'd like to pose a question whether the zoning board has reviewed these. My understanding from discussions with the developer and from the comments made by the planning expert earlier is that these were issued to the prior owner. And so, it raises the question of whether these DEP permits and variances can be transferred from one landowner to the other? And if so, are there restrictions? Are there conditions on such transfers? If there are restrictions or conditions put on them, what are they? And so, I would like to have all of these questions put on record, and I'd very much like to hear from the zoning board. Thank you.
Thank you. You're going to tell us about the DEP and availability of all of the documents?
Very briefly, these are the permits. They were issued in August of 2017. They are transferable. They do have a duration of five years, so this is good for five years. There's a whole host of conditions in here. As you can see, it's very limited, and they're all spelled out in the permits. Again, everybody within 200 feet was noticed when they were applied for. They had ample opportunity to discuss this with the DEP. The permits are valid.
Thank you.
I would even enter them as an exhibit.
Mr. Falcone, your firm handled the application?
No, it did not. It was actually Kleinfelter Environmental.
Okay.
They also did the permit next door. There were comments that, were these two looked at together? Well, they were looked at. One was looked at after the other. They realized they gave one on the lot next door a couple of years before, and they did, gave another one again. I am a freshwater wetlands expert. I understand the rules, the regulations, so...
Mr. Dumont, do you want to...
Is there anyone else in the order?
I'm sorry.
Trying to figure out where we are in terms of exhibits.
I stopped at A3.
Okay, so that's A4 then?
Yeah. And that is all the permitting issued by the DEP. Freshwater wetlands, line verification, transition area waiver, and flood hazard permits.
Mr. Falcone, do you want to respond to that question? I think a few minutes ago, you said something about...
Well, I did, and the fact that the DEP, I believe, was in 2015, issued the permits for 410 Ridgeview Road, and very similar conditions, very, very limited building. Actually, you can see the house that was constructed on 410 is right here, and it has the same restrictions that this one has. Same sewer to the rear, very tight, limited disturbance right around it. Now, they do not look at them cumulatively, because they're separate lots. But obviously, if they issued permits for lots that adjoining each other, they were aware that they issued a permit on Lot 410 when they issued it on 394. So, I do believe the DEP has looked at this cumulatively, but they are separate lots. They stand alone.
You wish to say something?
I just want to clarify something. Patricia Shanley, 211 Ridgeview Road, and I...
Will tell the truth.
I will tell the truth.
Thank you.
I just want to clarify something. I'm not sure it's clear. It's the same builder and the same large wetland, and the conditions that you just stressed, you said, limited, tight, limited disturbance, those have not been followed in the least on number 500. It has been mowed down. I spoke to the former arborist who informed me prior to building that, because I was very upset that that wetland would be destroyed, because it's a very rich wildlife habitat. I teach children on the ridge. I teach them that I hope that adults will make the right decisions. There were many wildlife species that existed there before that home was built. That is a very direct corridor for not only wildlife, but for children. It's the only way that children can get up the ridge, because there is no sidewalk on the great road that reaches the top of the hill. I would not suggest this second home be built. I think if Princeton wants to keep its ecological integrity and show any sign to our children that we are making right decisions in the future, this would not be granted. It would be given to Friends of Princeton Open Space and serve as the wildlife corridor it used to be, and for children to get up that great road. So, I'd suggest that prior experience, and we can just look at that prior lot and see that those regulations, those fences did not work. These are obligate wetland species, rushes, phragmites, and sensitive fern that have been mowed down the entire lot from the great road to beyond this house, number 500, to make it look like a lawn. That is not what the DEP suggested when they granted 500 to be able to be built, and we have no reason to believe that these restrictions will be followed now. So, I highly suggest, I would suggest you ask Lincoln to clarify, whether he was saying to delay building or not to have building. For the benefit of the community, the climate, and our children, I would say no.
Thank you. Do we have other comments while we're... Are you going to come?
Yeah, my name is Ur Kaitmas.
Sir, do you have a business address you want to give us?
62 Princeton Avenue, Opel.
All right. And do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Okay, just some comments on, I am the builder on the 410 Ridgeview. Couple things, when you look from outside, looks different. Now, the DEP allows, the fence is on the, not on wetlands, it's on wetland buffer zone. So, between the wetland buffer zone, you're allowed to mow the grass, to keep it, but wetlands, you're not allowed to mow it. So, this, when they see the fence and then move behind it, people think that wetland is mowed. That's one thing. About the lot, the water, we only water issue after the topsoil spread it, right in the front, where the big drop from the Ridgeview comes before the house. That's because of there was some settlement, and then we had the extremely hot weather with the constant rain, so the grass didn't grow. So, we are addressing that issue, because people bought the house, we are responsible to them. So, right now, probably by the spring, everything will be graded, and then grass will be fine. And then, the other comment was, somebody said that was a mud hole there, and probably industrial sun pump running all the time. We built the house above the water level. So, actually, we did not, during the construction, we didn't even have a sun pump in there, and we had not drop of water in the basement. Just to make it clear, you know, we don't have industrial sun pumps running 24 hours a day. So, I mean, people paid a lot of money to buy this house. They know exactly what wetlands, they explained everything, and they're not going to put their money that, obviously, we are not hiding anything there. So, just to make it clear, so everybody on the same page.
Thank you. All right?
Sir, just a quick follow-up question. You know, given, you said that the foundation was above the water table, and yet, one of the exhibits, the picture, actually shows the foundation filled with water, looking like a swimming pool.
We're not benefiting from the conversation you're having, because it's not being recorded.
Oh, okay.
I think you should come to the microphone.
No, absolutely. Sir, you had mentioned that the foundation was built above the water table, and there wasn't a drop of water, but I think we had one of the exhibits actually showed the foundation looking like a swimming pool.
Yeah, that's during the construction, before the grading down. After it's grading down, you can go talk to neighbors, I mean, people living there, see if they see any water there and if some pump running.
But would water enter, and this is maybe just an engineering discussion, but it just seems like if it...
I think we're all talking outside our areas of expertise. I don't think you know anything in detail about the comments you're making, and in that sense, it's good that you could bring them to our attention, but I think you've made the point, and that's it. Is there any, you wish to, and you afterwards, is that...
I just wanted to...
Oh, you were just pointing.
Just a comment. To hear a question. Did I hear him right to say that the wetland grass has not been mowed beyond the fence that was around the 500 house? Is that what you said?
We're not talking...
Yeah, but on the other side of that fence is where it got mowed.
Please, you've had your chance to talk. I think we're just getting confused. Is there anyone who hasn't yet spoken who wishes to? I believe I saw you. Sir, if you would come and make your comments.
I'm Sarah Hollister. I live at 437 Ridgeview Road. I...
Ms. Hollister, do you swear from your testimony will be truthful?
Yes, I'll be truthful. Ridgeview Road is perhaps the neighborhood that is closest to what can be called country in Princeton. That's why we live there, for the quietness and the minimal light pollution. Now, there is a new and enormous house across the road with us, with lights blazing from every one of its windows, invading our night sky. We're afraid another such potentially, such building will be allowed to arise on the three-acre lot adjacent to us, further increasing the polluting night light. We moved here to live on the ridge about 30 years ago, to be able to escape light pollution, to enjoy the darkness of the night sky, to see the stars and the moon. Our son is a serious amateur astronomer and needs darkness to study the night sky with his telescope. My husband, Lincoln, is also appreciative of the night sky. He was one of the first scientists to study the rocks the astronauts brought back from the moon. I ask that the decision to change the zoning, to allow another large house to be built on the next lot, be delayed until we can be assured that the wetland and the stormwater drainage will not be degraded by the building of the two houses. One, the just-built house at 500 Ridgeview Road, that's its number now, and the one proposed to be built at 394 Ridgeview. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think now we've heard all of the people from the audience who wish to comment on this case. Is that right? Okay. I believe we have. Do you wish to make any further comments?
I did a couple of comments, I think. I think that a lot of the discussion tonight has not been about the lot in question, but what people have observed on an adjoining property, which is not before the board, but which is still in the process of being construction completed. And so, I just make that point, because our lot that's before you tonight has been, as Mr. Falcone testified, before every environmental review board or agency that is required to be presented to and obtain a permit. So, that is the state of New Jersey, and they have issued the permits that are required, and they have done the environmental review that is required. I think that that is important to make a distinction, that this is, this property complies. It will, any house that's built on this property has to comply with all of your zoning regulations and setback rules and floor area ratio, and you, the township, the municipality does have the right to review all those aspects. I don't think I have anything further to say, other than that this is an asset to the community, this property, and I think that, you know, we feel that there is a, the lot should not remain vacant, that it's suitable for development. This board granted a zoning variance for this same application, in other words, a four-acre requirement and a three-acre lot. So, I think that those are considerations that the board should take into account. Mr. Falcone, do you have anything? I will only note that at the prior application, it's in the resolution that the zoning on the ridge wasn't really set at four acres for existing lots, it was set at four acres for proposed lots, and it should not have affected the existing lots. We have a lot within 200 feet, that's a half an acre. It still supports a home, and there's no reason why this three-acre lot, with all its permits, can't. It'll be further scrutinized and reviewed by your township engineer from a site plan perspective, and I think that the town is protected.
Okay. All right. I think we can go into executive session unless you have questions you wish to ask any of the people.
I have a, uh, a question and maybe Mr. Falcone could help. On the, on the building that's just being completed, or on any building, but on that one, does DEP come out and do a final inspection regarding their conditions? Or does someone like you certify that conditions have been followed?
That is not a requirement. I think they rely on the local, um, towns to make sure that the structure and the site was constructed in accordance with those permits. Your, your office gets an ads bill, but DEP does not do a check.
That's correct.
Can I ask questions as well? So on the, well, on the house that was already, that was built previously, was, is there a similar fence, uh, that surrounds that property as well, that house?
Yes, yes. What happens is that disturbed area, with the exception of that sewer finger, must put a permanent fence at the limit of disturbance, at the approved limit of disturbance.
What type of fence?
It's a post and rail. It actually can be any fence, but, um, they accept post and rail, which was constructed on the site.
So the post and rail, uh, allows any wild animals and small children to go through it?
Yes, yes. But it's, it's really there to demarcate that this is-
Where the wetland effectively-
This is, this is what you're allowed to disturb outside this fence, no. And we did put, we surveyed and laid out the line, so they put it in the right spot.
So, we are talking about, we are, we have been hearing about both properties, the one that was recently built and I did hear someone say that some, uh, playground area was built outside of that fence. Are, are you saying that that is not the case?
Um, I'm unaware of that, I have not seen that. The last time I was at the site, there was no play apparatus there at all, so I can't, I can't speak to that.
Can anyone else who's been involved speak to that? As far as on this, the builder, the owner of the property? Was that, was that not a truthful statement?
It, it's not the same property, but-
It was a truthful statement that there is a play, large, complex playground that's been built on the outside of the fence and it looks to be on some sort of a tarp or sand or something, we're not sure what, but it looks like it's impermeable surface and it's, and it's quite large. We have all seen it and if-
It's also in one of the pictures.
It, it's in the pictures and if the developer is not saying anything, I think you should ask him directly because he knows.
Could you answer that question, please, sir?
Well, as far as we know-
Mr. Dumont, you're not testifying, so we need to swear in your client?
Yeah, we are not aware-
Sir, could you state your name for the record first, please?
Oh, Lee Ping An.
And sir, if you'd raise your right hand, you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Yeah. Uh, we are not aware of any, uh, this, uh, playground or swing set before we, uh, you know, transfer the title to the home buyer. We, we haven't visited the, the home recently, so we don't know.
So you're saying that if there is any structure there, it was not your doing as the builders of the property, but it's been done after they purchased the house and got the title?
Correct.
So, the argument is with them, not with you. I think that's the case you're making, is that right?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
I, I think it does speak to the issue whether enforcement would happen or whether, you know, whether we need to be concerned about what's happened prior in that area.
If we were to grant a, a permit, I think we can condition it with certain things that concern us. I'm very concerned about the spillage of light at nighttime, so I-
I thought that might get your attention.
Make my normal complaint there. I don't know the issue about runoff, uh, from, we talked about that from property. I'm not quite sure how that would come in on this, dip in the lot. But we can condition any motion we may to deal with issues of that sort.
But the question is, what is the enforcement for that? I mean, we can condition it, just like the DEP conditioned, but is there an enforcement or follow-up?
In principle, the zoning officer-
Well, I'll go up with the engineer and look and see if there's a violation. If there is, we'll issue a notice of violation and haul up on it.
And in terms of this proposal, how much of the acreage, I know it's three acres, how much of the acreage would the building be on? And how large of a house are we talking about? Because I haven't seen it. Is it quarter of an acre? And where would the fence be?
Actually, the fence is shown. It would be right on this yellow line, with the exception of the sewer. So it would be exactly on this yellow area. I would estimate approximately a half an acre of this site is being disturbed, in total. It's probably very well documented in the permit, the exact, but if this is three acres, that's approximately a half acre.
A half acre, and how large of a house?
Um, you would be the better one, the square footage of the house?
Yes, about a 5,000 square feet.
Is this the same kind of a plan, same, same size as the other one that we've been comparing it to?
Yes.
It's, it's similar, that's the-
Similar in, in dimension.
Yeah, that's the exact house, I, because I was involved in the construction. So that is the exact house and it's very comparable in size.
Yeah, it just, it just seems like there's a, there's not a, not much proper, not much land for the homeowner to use.
Oh, no.
It's very, very tight. That's, that's just, the compliance thing's really what's worrying me is that it seems very likely that the homeowner will want to take down that fence and start to utilize more of the property. And I don't know if that's really for us really to determine that, but just looking at that from a, a regular homeowner, you've got all that land and you can only use, you know, 30 feet outside your door, seems to be a bit tight.
It, it's very limited. Uh, my experience is, yes, people always go beyond the limits, it's just their nature. But then again, they would be violating the permit and if someone, they call the DEP or even the town, they would, like Mr. Bridger said, they would check it out and issue us, you know, a summons.
Mr. Falcone, I just wanted to clarify something. You've referenced, uh, before in your testimony, a site plan being within the town's jurisdiction. Did you really mean building plans? Because a single-family home, you know it's exempt from site plan or formal site plan.
I guess by site plan, I meant, uh, like a plot plan to get an approval. At first, it would start with engineering and then it would end up with, with zoning and eventually the house plans are approved by construction. But that still has to take place, even though there's site plans in the permitting that show conceptual, um, we still have to go before the township engineer, or excuse me, Princeton engineer and Mr. Bridger. So there's still a process left. Even though the DEP has approved the limits, the engineering still has to be approved.
And Mr. Dumont, I had a question for you. Your client owns the property now, correct?
Correct.
All right. And the conditions in the permit with respect to conservation restrictions and I think also the recording of the permit, is that something the prior owner took care of? Or has that already been done, to your knowledge?
Yeah, it's already been done.
It's already been done?
Yeah, by the prior owner.
Okay.
Okay. That's Michael Bullitt. What do we?
This one really does trouble me because I feel, I wonder, I guess one question I just came to mind is, is this, is this the last piece of property in that area that has been left undeveloped and why might that be? You know, I, I just, I guess that's one question that I have.
Well, there appear to have been two adjacent pieces of property. One with the house that's just been built and then this, this next piece. So, maybe the two last areas, I don't know.
Yeah.
Perhaps I could elaborate a little bit. The Lettys had building permits on both lots prior to the riparian rules that came into effect. We had letters of interpretation defining the wetlands and we had submitted and received building permits for both of those lots back in, I'm gonna say 2005. But the economy was starting to go sour with real estate and the Lettys elected not to construct the houses at that time and then their permitting lapsed. So that was, then came the, um, C1 buffer rules, which changed everything and they had to go-
So things have gotten stricter?
Things have gotten much more, much stricter. The developments were much larger because the wetlands is further away from the houses, as you see, uh, on this plan. Uh, it's the, it's the riparian buffer that is really limited what can be done on this property.
Is it true that there is a house on every other lot on that street? On both sides of the street?
The one exhibit I had shows existing houses, uh, within the 200-foot range. This is the preserve, I know there's houses here and all around. You see anything in brown, there, there's, there's houses. I, I don't know of any other vacant lots along Ridgeview personally. There may be, but they're not in this immediate area.
Thank you. What is your pleasure?
I don't feel like I have enough information to be, feel comfortable voting in favor of this one. And I don't know whether that's-
I, I agree with Ms. Coulson.
What, what, what additional information do you need?
I just think there have been a lot of concerns raised about, I, I know that there's, I mean, I don't know that there's been a lot more rain lately than usual, but there's not going to be less in the future. So, for that to be something that, that is being proposed as a temporary issue that will, I, I don't know if I can summarize this well, but I, I feel like there might be, I just feel like we might want to take a little closer look at how the impact of what just was built and how those interact. I know that we're not looking at what was already built, but it seems as though that prior house may, may have caused problems and all we can do, all I feel like I can, I can do is just form an opinion about it.
Well, I mean-
I don't feel like I have enough information.
We have been told in Trenton, uh, who are employed by the state, who have made learned decisions, presumably, about the wetlands and what is proper and what is not. Now, I, I honestly don't know on what basis they made those decisions, but, um, you know, it's not as if these people were just coming to us and saying, well, we want to do this and we were the ones that had to look at all of the aspects of the problem. In essence, we're looking at an aspect of this that says, here is a person with a piece of property, three acres. It was zoned at three acres at a time when that was permitted. Then, the zoning changed to make four acre lots required and, uh, we are now being asked to allow that lot to be developed, consistent with all of the concerns-
And was it, was it required to take into account the fact that that was a wetland area?
Sorry?
Was it zoned for because of the issues of it being a wetland?
But the change-
Well, I'd like to know that, I guess.
But we've got lots and lots of zones in Princeton where there are lots that aren't of the size that the zone is zoned for.
Yes.
In part because the zones were plunked down after the lots had been designated.
Okay, but that's, you know, this is-
And this is almost the situation here.
But, um, I think someone also made the point that, you know, this is, uh, you know, not, I mean, you can't bring the wetlands back. So if, if they, if they do encroach on it, I don't even understand how the enforcement's gonna take place. And this may be the reasoning behind making it four acres and now, you know, we would have to make a variance because, you know, they, maybe there was a reason why we wanted to preserve these, um, this land. And I'm concerned, I'm very concerned and I'm concerned about the enforcement. I mean, if DEP says it's okay and they give a permit, how do we know that that's gonna be taken, you know, into consideration? We're already seeing that the other house may already be encroaching right, you know, right away. So, like, you know, Ms. Coulson says, I think just maybe taking a step back and understanding a little bit more. I mean, we're not in any hurry, I don't think, to do this.
Certified it is developable, let me just put it in that phrase. I'm not sure that that's really what they've done. What other evidence are we going to get?
Would it not, would it not make sense to have, would it not make sense maybe to have the town engineer come and talk to us about it?
I, I think that the, the town engineer is, it will, will review it after zoning and it will need to comply. I think we, as a zoning board, need to stick to what the zoning issue is. And if the DEP has weighed in and the engineer is going to weigh in, you know, our part is to interpret the zoning. I, I, I think, you know, we're, we're not water management engineers. We're not, you know, we don't have that expertise to, um, to make those judgments.
Okay, but are we obligated to give a zoning, uh, variance?
We made a decision now about whether this can go ahead or not.
Yeah, I mean, this was, this-
We're not going to procrastinate. We voted up or down, basically. And we can put constraints on it that we think are essential to make the development compatible with the, the area in which it is.
Could I add a comment? I, I think this is an instance where the precautionary principle should really be taken into account. Um, I think we have a, a very unique situation. It's not just an individual landowner that's owned the property for, you know, 20 years and this has been grandfathered in. It's a new landowner who purchased a property and you, the zoning board, are being asked to make a variance. It, uh, in response to Mr. Floyd's question earlier, Mr. Falcone clarified that it's up to the town, you know, DEP doesn't come out to see if the permits they issued were adhered to, that it's really up to the town to do that. And so now, you're, uh, being asked to make a zoning decision where there are, uh, there are impacts from the, from the neighboring development that have been made in the same wetlands by the same developer and it would demonstrate an abundance of caution if a decision were delayed until the town took a look at those impacts, at the very least. And to be making a decision now, um, when there are neighboring, you know, impacts on the neighboring property, Mr. Falcone also, uh, as I understood it, indicated that the DEP did not look at the cumulative impacts of these developments. They looked at the, you know, the, the individual permits separately, at two different points in time. And, yeah, I think what we really need to be looking at right now, being that it's the same wetlands that's gonna be affected, you know, by two different developments, by the same developer, is what are those cumulative impacts? And as far as I understand, I haven't heard any evidence that that's been considered and I think this is exactly the role of the zoning board to consider, to consider these things before making a decision.
I, I have to respond to that. I think they did look at it because they were two properties side by side. They issued a prior permit, then they issued a subsequent permit, knowing that they issued a permit on the other one, knowing it was the same wetlands. Now, it was still treated individually. Uh, with all due respect, I think we're getting away from the main point here tonight and that's can, we, can we build a house on a three acre lot in a four acre zone? The DEP has already made their decision on where it can be built. So now it's just a matter of engineering and zoning. The question before this board is, can they build on a three acre lot as opposed to a four acre lot?
I would agree with that.
Lot 410, right next door, was four acres. It was developed in the same way we're asking to develop tonight on our lot, under the scrutiny of the township engineer and the zoning officer. What, it really isn't any different, except for the fact that we're a three acre lot in a four acre zone. I think if we look at it from that perspective, I think everybody else who has jurisdiction will do their job.
Thank you. We get a lot of cases- We get a lot of cases in town that people come in and say, "I've got a lot that's undersized and I want to put a house on it. I'll knock down what was there before, want to put a house on it. The house I'm going to put on it will meet all of the regulations about height setback, floor area ratio and all that sort of thing. And the only reason I'm before you is because you say I've got to have three-quarters of an acre and I've only got half an acre," or something like that. This is exactly the same type of case.
It's not exactly the same. It is not exactly the same because the, because the property is different.
I think it's identical.
Well, I don't.
I don't either.
That's fine, you vote no if we suggest it's built. But I don't think it's, I don't think that this other, the things that we are concerned about, I don't want the wetlands destroyed, of course. I don't think we, as a zoning board, have anything to say about that. We put that expertise up to somebody else, the state and our own engineer. And our own engineer will look at the plans and see that the development is made in accordance with what is appropriate for the wetlands.
I would prefer to make a motion to postpone so that we could get some more information rather than to vote no.
Ms. Coulson, question for you. When you say-
We have a motion on the floor? No, we don't.
Do you? No, I don't think you do.
No.
A question for you, Ms. Coulson. When you say more information, are you saying you want the applicant to give you more information or you want Mr. West, the land use engineer, to come to a meeting and discuss it?
I, yes, because it just, it just doesn't make sense to me to say, to try to correct something after the fact, which is what it feels like to me if we've said, "This is our role and we will let it go ahead and we will let the other people do their job and stop it or change it." So yes, what you said, I think I would, that would be what I would-
You would want Mr. West to come, carry this, and you want Mr. West to come and make a review with you, the process again, for how he would enforce-
And even including, I realize that there are times when a lot is undersized through, not the fault of the person who bought it, but in this case, maybe it matters very much in terms of the issues that have been raised by people in that area. So it may matter that it's, it may materially matter that it's three acres rather than four. I, you know, it may not just be a change after the fact.
I can't speak for Mr. West. Certainly, it is true that the state preempts this area by statute. That's why they have the exclusive right to issue these permits to allow construction in wetlands. I don't think you, you don't have a copy of the permits, but I'd be happy to conduct you. But there are numerous conditions that are being posed on the applicant.
I don't think I'm going to do a very good job of doing it right now.
I know, I know. It's up to the board, I guess, at this point, if the majority of you feel that having Mr. West come to the next meeting will clarify for you, you know, the role of DEP and his role, which I don't believe the town has any separate regulations. They defer to DEP because the state preempts this area of regulation. They keep it to themselves exclusively. It's true, Mercer County Soil Conservation, I suspect that you'll need to, they'll have to sign off on this as well, but I think it's up now to the majority of the board if you feel it's helpful to you to have Mr. West come. Is there room on the agenda, Mr. Bridger, if this application were carried? Is there room?
Bump the next case. If it doesn't get heard that night, they'll go in January. So we have like five or six cases for the next meeting, so.
Yes, I honestly don't see how we can force to carry something when, what information do we want? We've got experts in the state that have given evidence. If you grant those pieces of paper that status, we've had somebody, you know, talk to us about what they want to do. And it really is an undersized lot issue, apart from the fact that it's in a very special location with very particular problems. And certainly, Mr. West is much more capable of judging whether the site plan that comes up after the variance is given, assuming it was to be given, he's much better off able to judge that than we, as a zoning board, listening to another planner and another expert in this and another expert on that. I just think we, if we don't want to have this case go ahead, then I think the board should make a motion to disapprove it. And you have to formulate why you want to do that very carefully because we shouldn't have something go to council or go to a higher court where we haven't made a sensible, reasoned decision.
And I agree with that. The reason I brought up having Mr. West come is because I was beginning to get the impression that for some board members, if they heard from someone from their own staff, if the concern is that the applicant wants to get their approval, so they are presenting information from their own perspective and that if certain board members can hear from the municipal engineer, that indeed the regulation lies with DEP. And that if violations are reported to him, he will come out and look at it. And obviously, if neighbors saw violations, they can contact DEP to tell them, "You need to come out here because this is what is happening on this property." But what I was hearing was that if board members could hear from the engineer, it would give them a comfort level as opposed to simply voting no tonight, saying, "I'm opposing it, I'm not going to approve it." So.
I do not see what harm would come in a postponement for that reason. I don't see what harm is done to either our reputation or the process, frankly.
I think unless there's a real reason for postponement that we can articulate properly, it is unfair to an applicant to keep on making them come back. What are they going to bring to us that's going to make us able to make a decision?
I think we would hear from our own staff, a more clear understanding of, "I'm not an expert on the environmental side of it."
But I think because we're not the environmental experts, we're leaving it to them to make their, to do their job, to follow through if there are conditions that he imposes on this application. And to leave it to them to do their job because we're not that, we don't have that expertise. So I can support it without additional testimony, personally.
We've got to do something. We can't stay up all night. We've got two more cases to come. It seems to me we need a motion and we need to vote it up or down, and we need to condition it so that it meets concerns that we can obviously articulate.
It seems like you're asking the board to approve a variance that would send us-
No, I'm not asking them to approve a variance. I'm asking them to make a motion either for or against. I don't know what they're going to do. And then we vote on it.
But I think this is a case, it's not a case of somebody who owned a property prior to the rules changing. It's a case of a developer coming into Princeton and buying an undersized lot and wanting to, wanting to develop it.
You said this before, you're not adding new information to our understanding. And I have articulated my view of the case. It's an undersized lot. Something is going to be built on it in accordance with what the law permits. And it's only, the case is only before us because the lot is too small.
Well, may I make-
If it had been a four-acre lot, they could have done it tomorrow with the permissions they've had already.
May I make a motion that we postpone consideration of this particular case until we have an opportunity to have Mr. West come before us-
Okay, is there a second?
And clarify the issues. And I don't know if I need to clarify things.
Well, Ms. Coulson-
I'll second that motion.
Ms. Coulson, just to-
I'll second the motion to postpone.
You second the motion?
Yes.
Just to clarify-
I conflicted myself.
So we have a motion and a second to postpone. Is that legitimate for the board?
It is. Just to clarify, it's being carried to a date specific, which is December 12th, for the purpose of allowing Mr. West, the land use engineer, to attend, to address your questions regarding the application and-
What is Mr. West going to address? That's what we would like to know.
Well, I assume, I assume, Mr. Dumont, that what he's going to address is explaining to the board the jurisdiction of NJDEP and his own jurisdiction and how he would handle violations if they are reported in the future. I don't know if board members would have other questions for him, but since the state preempts this area, it's going to limit, I think, what, you know, Mr. West will be able to tell you about his own jurisdiction. But-
Haven't we already discussed that tonight in terms of what the state has done and their review and what the municipal responsibility is and who reviews an application at the municipal level? Haven't we already discussed all that?
Well, Mr. Dumont, I gather, I don't know how many board members are going to vote for this motion, but-
We, in principle, can now discuss the motion because we have it and it's been seconded.
Right.
I personally think it's a very bad motion because I don't think it addresses zoning issues, which is what we're here for. And I think that the board itself, even after listening to the many experts that may come, does not have the capability, I'll use that wicked word, to make a decision which will be any different from the one that we could make if we just regard it as an undersized lot with a request for development, with all the appropriate, up to this point, state documents supporting that as a possibility. And once we make a, if we were to make a positive decision, then our own engineering staff taking care of the details, that in a way, we're all worrying about it. We really want to see that the development is done truly in accordance with what is appropriate for a three-acre lot in the wetlands. We're not saying that-
If it's possible to do so.
But we just, I think, need to pass that burden onto the professionals in the town, engineering officers, so we can. So I would vote against the motion.
Okay. But, I mean, in terms of, again, the postponement, if we wanted to make a decision, I mean, we're not under an obligation to pass any variance in terms of just saying, you know, it's an undersized lot. I mean, this is a lot that's never been developed before. And I think that's very different than when you have a lot that is someone who's a resident wanting to make changes and improvements to a home to be able to age in place or stay in their home or bring in family members. I think this is very different in terms of asking for a variance because of the undersized hardship. I don't see it as a hardship, quite frankly, because it's a brand, it's a brand-new building. And I don't think we're under an obligation to just say, "Develop it." I mean, Princeton doesn't have to develop every piece of land that's available.
So is Princeton going to buy the property from the owner?
Well, I didn't get that far.
It doesn't belong to Princeton?
But it doesn't belong to, it doesn't, it doesn't, it's not our decision to make in terms of who owns it and who's going to own it. Our decision is, just because we're not obligated, just because somebody owns it wants to develop it to approve it. They knew when they bought it that it was not, it was on wetlands and that it was not under their, it was not, it was not under code, that they were going to need a variance. So they took, they're taking a calculated risk by doing that.
And they have taken their calculated risks. They have gone to the state. The state has given them permits to do it. And we, as the Princeton zoning board, have got the right to say, "Noughty boys, you've forgotten that."
I tell you, for, for me-
Mr. Floyd.
I'll support the motion. Unless Mr. West somehow reads the DEP permitting and sees some fault in it, I'm voting for this application because it's DEP's responsibility, not our responsibility and not even Mr. West's responsibility to say if this can be built on. But I will postpone it if what people want to hear is from Mr. West, fine.
Okay, I guess we need to call a vote on the motion. So if you vote yes, it is to postpone. If you vote no, it is to reconsider a motion for this particular piece of property at this time.
Correct.
Ms. Coulson?
Could we call the roll then for us, Gloria?
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Ms. Chen?
No.
Ms. Lambros?
Yes.
Chairman voice?
No. Well, I don't quite understand where we are at this point. The board has voted to postpone this case until a further meeting. It has never happened before, to the best of my knowledge.
And I would suggest that the citizens don't wait till the next meeting to go to Mr. West if you have questions, because it's just going to slow down the process. Let's get things resolved.
Are they, are they going to Mr. West or is Mr. West coming here?
He's coming here.
He'll be at this December 12th meeting.
When are we, we're going to carry this to our next meeting?
To December 12th.
To the 12th of December?
Yes.
Okay. Is that acceptable?
Can we take five? Mr. Royce, can we take five minutes?
Yeah.
A five-minute break?
Okay. Let's have a, let's have a five-minute break and we'll carry your case until the 12th. Is that, 12th of December?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, but-
No.
Okay, I'm going to avail myself of a 12-minute break for a two-minute break.
This goes into...
My feeling is that I don't know enough about that land. Maybe, maybe it's beyond our scope of what we're capable of ruling on. That's wrong, just because, you know, I'd always be conflicted because I don't think that land probably should be developed, really, in some ways. Yeah, that owns it. You see that one? It's like going to have little, it's like 20 feet. It's like, it's, it tells you something. And I'm conflicted by that, right? I mean, I, he has a right to build on land if he thinks he bought, right? But I'm not sure how far that goes. It's a tough one.
294 Ridgeview, I need to take home. Okay, so let us try and start once again. The next case we have is 25 Sargent Street. The case number is Z1818649. Mr. Bridger, you'll read your memorandum into the record for us.
Mr. Bridger, I'll just note the zoning, the notice thing is in order and the board has jurisdiction to hear the application.
Thank you. Owner applicants, Richard and Susan Prentke, are owners of 25 Sargent Street. They are seeking a floor area ratio variance to permit the enclosure of an existing second-floor Applicants also requesting front and side yard setback and building coverage variance to permit the installation of a second air conditioning unit. Property's located in the R2 zone and subject to the Use in Bulk regulations in accordance with 17A 239 and 240 of the former Princeton Land Use Ordinance. The subject property was resulted of a use variance in the 1980s. Staff's unable to find the approving resolution and finding of facts for that project. The subject lot is noncomplying with respect to the following bulk requirements. The required lot area is 10,000. The existing is 2,352 square feet. The lot width requirement is 75. The existing is 24 feet. The lot depth requirement's 100. The existing is 98. And the existing subject property itself is not complying with respect to the following bulk requirements. Required smaller side yard setback requirement's 10. Existing is zero. The combined side yard setback requirement's 25. The existing is zero. The rear yard setback is 35. The existing is 29.6. The billing height to setback, two to one, existing's noncomplying. The floor area ratio proportional is 52.9, and the existing is 105.87%. Building coverage requirement's 25. Existing's 47.02%. The air conditioner setback, side yard setback in the front requirement's five feet, and existing is one feet, and the, the front yard setback requirement's 25, and the existing is 21. The applicant is proposing to construct a wall to enclose an existing open balcony on the second floor of the townhouse. This will increase the floor of the subject property by approximately 95% and will result in a FAR of 109.91%. That's a D variance, requires five votes, affirmative votes to pass. They're also asking for relief for a second air conditioner within the front yard setback. They're seeking a proposed front yard setback of 15 YRS. The requirement is 25. The side yard setback they're seeking is six inches. The requirement is five. And the building coverage increases slightly from 25 to 47.41%. They've requested C1 variance, and I believe this property was a subject of fire damage from the neighboring property, which I believe the board granted similar relief to for the enclosure of their similar porch in the back of their property. So those are the questions. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Is this a condominium?
Yes, it is, but it's fee simple, I believe. There's a homeowners association. I think they're fee simple. They're all fee simple. They own the lot. They own the lot, so it's probably not a condominium.
There is one group of condominiums that I don't...
There's, there's a...
An individual property.
They're individual, but there's a homeowners association that takes care of the condominium.
My question is, does this fit within the homeowners association rules and regulations?
That's not our, that's not our business, sorry.
If you look at adjacent properties, some of them have got enclosed...
We've had two or three variances for the same type of relief, and when they've, it's up to them to file for their...
So there's no, that's not an issue?
No.
For them? Okay.
Fine, thank you. Okay. Are you showing us something on screen?
Can you, do you see it on your screen?
Yes.
Mr. DeCruz, could you just state your full name for the record?
Sure. John F. DeCruz.
And you're the architect who's representing the applicants tonight in their application, correct?
Correct.
All right, I'm just going to swear you in. If you'd raise your right hand, you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful.
Yes.
Thank you.
So I'd just like to start by saying that I'm here representing Susan and Dick Prentke. Sorry. So I'm here representing Susan and Dick Prentke. Unfortunately, they can't be here this evening. They would like to have been here, but they, their permanent home is in Seattle, so I'll be representing them. As Mr. Bridger said, their townhouse was about four months ago involved in a fire that started in the unit next door. Unfortunately, they had just finished renovating it, and now they're unfortunately going to have to renovate it again. Because of the fire, they started to think about, well, how can we improve the property and what's wrong with it or what's not working for them as it was? And so the two things, or the two things that we're asking for in terms of variance is, one is to enclose the rear porch, which is a recessed rear porch, so it's not projecting out beyond the building, and the second one is to add an additional air conditioning unit so they can go from a one-zone heating and air conditioning system to a two-zone heating and air conditioning system. So this is the, the site plan, just to kind of orient you in terms of where the different components are. Sargent Street is the front of the property. This is the front property here where the blue square is an existing AC compressor. The little red square is the proposed AC compressor that we like to put directly in front of the existing compressor. The green area is the existing house, and the little red square in the back is the recessed porch that we would like to enclose.
Mr. DeCruz, I can't see those slides. No, 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 that, so I'm asking, do you want them labeled individual exhibits or just the entire slide presentation, A1?
I think the entire slide presentation. I can, I can give you the presentation afterwards.
Okay.
So the reasons that we're requesting the variance, in terms of enclosing the recessed balcony, as you know, the house was, or as I've told you, the house was just recently involved in a fire. It needs extensive renovation. The entire interior of the house has been completely gutted. The, the porch, they've never, or the recessed balcony, they never used. The recessed balcony is adjacent to a very small kitchen, so they would like to enclose the balcony to enlarge the kitchen, one, so that there's, you know, just a more usable kitchen. We feel that the, the enclosure for the balcony is going to have very, very little impact. It basically constitutes adding two windows. In terms of the AC unit, previously, they had had an HVAC person look at the house in terms, they were not getting enough air conditioning on the third floor. They had an HVAC person look at it, said there wasn't really much that could be done considering the house was completely finished. After the fire, they had that same person come out to reevaluate it, see what the options were, and the HVAC person's recommendation was, now that everything is completely open, they could maintain the air handling unit in the basement, add an additional air handling unit to the attic, and get two-zone heating, which would be much more efficient than what they currently had. It's basically a three-story building. So to do that, we would, you know, we would need to add an additional air conditioning unit to the front of the building. The enclosed balcony in detail, again, it's the little red square in the back, which is recessed into the building. In essence, there would be no change to any of the setbacks from an FAR point of view. The allowable FAR, proportional FAR, is 52.9%. The minimum FAR is 30. We're currently at 105.87. It would be increased to 109.91. We'd basically be adding 95 square feet of additional FAR to the building. The existing floor plans, just to give you some context, so it's a basement and garage. Directly above is a, a living area with the kitchen in the back and a small family room and the little, again, the little square, red square, is the, the existing recessed covered porch. So it has two side walls, it has a roof, and it already has a low masonry railing. And again, you can see the small kitchen directly adjacent to it. So the request for the variance is to allow us to enclose the recessed porch and to enlarge the kitchen, little more, you know, work surface, and also have a seating area within the kitchen at a counter. From a facade point of view, this is the existing elevation. The windows that you see here in the little red square, which is the recessed balcony, are windows that are currently looked from the kitchen onto the balcony. The proposed would basically be adding two windows, but along the facade of the building, enclosing that balcony, which would allow it to become part of the kitchen. Again, there's already an existing roof in that area. There are two side walls, and there's a balcony, so we'd simply be adding two windows. Here's a picture of the existing condition. You can see it's fire damaged. The, the red area, again, would be where the two windows would go to enclose that, to enclose that recessed balcony. I think there's precedent already in the development for other units that have enclosed their balconies. 23 Sargent, I believe, got a variance to enclose their balcony last year. 31 Sargent, which is basically the exact same unit, but in, but flipped, has also enclosed their balcony with a small greenhouse. And then there are two units that are sort of across the back of the property. There's an access driveway that allows everybody to get to their driveway. So you can see in the image below, basically mirrored units where one still has an open balcony and the other one has, has enclosed their balcony. So again, we feel that there's precedence to, to do this in the, in the development. In terms of the AC unit, again, the little blue area here is the existing AC unit. The red area is the proposed. The existing setback to the current AC unit is 21 feet. We're asking for 15-foot front yard setback to the new AC unit. The required side yard is five foot. The existing has one foot, and we're asking for a six-inch setback to the new, new unit. This image on the left is a picture of the existing unit. It actually has a screen that surrounds it. That's within the front yard. The image next to it is the entire front yard basically has a fence that goes around it, so you can, I mean, I, you can kind of see the unit a little bit in the back, but it's pretty well shielded from the, from the street. Once the, if we were to add the additional unit, we would add the same screen around the new unit as exists on the existing unit. We're also asking to replace the existing unit with a new unit. All of the, well, I'm not going to say all, but most of the townhouses, as you can see from these images, also have their AC units in the front yard, and here are three, three examples of, of that. And that's, that's it.
One of the best things Mr. Hillier did when he designed houses was always to make the kitchen much too small to be useful. Most of the houses I know that he's put up has done that. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to comment on this case? It appears not. Do you have any questions, Claudia?
I'd like to say something.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see you.
I just, I just purchased a unit right down from them, and...
Ma'am, could you state your name for the record?
Oh, I'm sorry. Dawn McClatchy.
And Ms. McClatchy, your address is?
35 Sargent.
And do you swear if you give any testimony this evening, it will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
So I just purchased a unit there in August, right before, right before the fires, and I agree with the small, small kitchens, and I will be at, at this board meeting in December doing the exact same thing that he's doing, and I have to say that I would like to support it because there are other units that have already set the precedent, and I think it's a great idea. So, thank you.
To me, this seems eminently sensible, and such a small change to a, a big group of houses built, wall to wall, without us understanding how that was ever permitted by the board.
I move we approve this application.
Okay, we have a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Do we need any discussion of the motion? You're in no request for discussion. Claudia, could you call the roll for us, please?
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mrs. Schreiber?
Yes.
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Lambrouse?
Yes.
Chairman voice?
Yes.
Thank you. It's approved.
So we come now to the last case of the evening, which is 7779 Jefferson Road, and the case number is, it doesn't have a case number. It has an MLUL1199.
We forgot the case number. Sorry about that.
I don't see a case number on it.
Nope. We missed it.
Why can't I? Am I being blind in that?
We missed it, Barry. Sorry about that. The case number, we missed it.
So, so I'm not blind?
No.
Are you going to read your memorandum into the record?
Yes, Mr. Bridger, before you begin, I'll note the notice thing is in order. The board has jurisdiction to hear it.
Good evening. The applicant is 79 Jefferson LLC. They're seeking C1 variance relief to per... to permit construction of two parking spaces in exception to the required front yard setback. Properties in the R3 zone, subject to use in bulk regulations in accordance with section 178241 and 245, the existing, it's a two-family house, right? There's a permitted use as of right, the lot's non-compliant with respect to the lot width, the requirement is 60, existing is 50, it's also non-compliant with respect to lot area, 10,000 square foot requirement, lot area is 7,500 square foot, the existing, the subject property's non-compliant with the required eight-foot smaller side yard setback, the existing is 5.2, it's non-compliant with the combined side yard setback, the requirement's 20, the existing's 10.9, it's non-compliant with the front yard setback, the prevailing setback is 35.8, the existing's 27.5, the building coverage is non-compliant, the existing's 25, the exist, the required is 25, existing's 25.8, and it's not compliant with the required height to setback of 3.1, the existing's 3.7 to 1, it's not complying with parking, the requirement is three spaces, there are none, applicant is proposing to construct two paved 10-by-20 parking spaces within the required front yard setback, in accordance with section 178387C, as we heard earlier tonight, parking spaces are not required in the front yard, setback, it must be setback at least four feet from a property line, the prevailing front yard setback is 35.8 feet, plus or minus two feet, the proposed parking spaces will have a zero setback. Staff notes that if the proposed parking plan results in the elimination, that the proposed parking plan results in the elimination of two on-street parking spaces, the board may want to consider a shared-drive design that would reduce impervious coverage and save two on-street parking spaces, proposed plan is very close to the existing tree on the southern elevation, is unlikely the tree will survive it, whereas a shared parking plan that shifts the two spaces to the north might save the tree, if the board is inclined to approve this plan as proposed, the existing tree should be removed and replaced. And that's my memo, they're seeking C1 and C2, well, C1 variance relief, and if you have any questions, I'd be glad to address them.
Have you had questions on Mr. Bridger? No. Mr. Todd?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. So, I'm the attorney for the applicant, and the applicant, Daniel Abarsky, is here with me, we could be sworn he has a slide presentation for you.
John, do you swear or affirm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful?
I do.
So, if we could have the set marked as A1, it's a slide, a set of slides, so we'll reference the slide numbers as we go through to try to keep you current.
Good evening, board members, my name is Daniel Abarsky, presenting on behalf of 7779 Jefferson LLC, just want to make sure that the PowerPoint's up on the screen, because I can't see it from here.
The first page is...
Can you see your screen?
We've got it on the screen.
Yeah, okay, so, I'll begin. On this slide here is a picture of the duplex on 7779 Jefferson Road, that we are currently in the process of renovating. Excuse me, so, here's a picture of duplex, the next slide shows the tax map, it's on Lot 21, in between Witherspoon Street and Moore Street, and between Hawthorne and Henry, it's right in the middle of the block, it's outlined in black. The following slide shows the existing site conditions, outlined in yellow are the property boundaries, and outlined in blue is the existing building, which is staying, we're doing all the interior renovations. The only change here really is, we have eliminated the walkways around to the back, and if the variance, if the board grants the variance tonight, we'll eliminate the walkways in front as well, and I'll follow up on a slide with the proposal for that. The slide here shows the zoning bulk requirements that zoning officer Derek went over, they're all pre-existing non-conforming, and the, the existing meets all requirements. So, before we submitted for variances in the front yard setback, we tried a couple different solutions, the first one was to bring a driveway along the side yard, which is outlined in red in this slide, and do a two-car parking arrangement in the rear yard. We met with zoning officer Derek and municipal engineer Jack West on site, and they explained to us that the, there was not enough room to come down the side yard, with the obstructions coming from the side, which is the flue pipe for the furnace for fresh air, there was only 6.9 feet of clearance, where eight feet is required. In addition, from a practical standpoint, the driveway down that side would require a retaining wall along the property, and possibly cause some complications with stormwater and maybe upset neighbors, anyway, point being, 6.9 feet, not eight, so we weren't able to work out this solution here.
Could I just ask you a question about the slide?
Sure.
At the top of the slide under proposal number one, there appears to be, is there, is that a back access road running behind the...
Yeah, so I'll get to that on the next slide.
Okay.
On the following slide. Yes, there is a 10-foot alleyway.
So, there is an access road back there?
It's not an access road, it's a 10-foot alleyway.
Okay.
Yeah, I'll show you on this following slide.
But it was designed in the face of horses, and a horse could watch and step over the flue.
So, the next thought before coming to the board with this application was to perhaps access the alleyway through a shared driveway, and that's outlined in red, the, the shared driveway, it's shared with four families at the moment, and I'll show you some pictures on the following slides, and the thought was to connect our driveway, which is outlined in blue, and create the same type of parking scenario in the rear yard. However, the first neighbor I approached told me he wasn't interested in such an arrangement, obviously, you know, there was, be a discussion monetary, or paving, or maintenance, but he wasn't interested, but he told me that he wouldn't be in opposition for us to park in the front yard, and as you see, there's nobody here tonight, so I guess he's not the only one. The alleyway runs all the way through, but there's a lot of obstructions along the way, I'll show you one of them, which is from the neighbor right next door, but there are garages and cars, and I think this has been a disputed alleyway for some time, and without having everybody, all the neighbors clear all their garages and cars, that would be trouble to get through for our lot. So, here's a picture of the shared driveway, it's a duplex on each side, so like I said, four families share this driveway. Here's a picture in the back, the idea was to use this alleyway to get to the rear of our lot, you can see he has a lot of, looks like logs, wood, firewood, so it would involve him clearing that out, again, we never got to that point, because neighbors weren't interested in making an arrangement of this sort.
They have a car in the garage, is that right?
That's theirs, so there's...
So, there must be a way to get a car in.
Oh, excuse me, sorry. Yeah. Okay, so, the picture I showed with the shared driveway is outlined in red, and then it opens up into a kind of courtyard, there is a garage on each side of the courtyard, and then there's cars parked in the garage, outside of the garage. Yeah. Along the side garage, I should have put more pictures, like I said, but, okay. So, and again, there are obstructions all along the alleyway, so it's impossible to get any kind of extended access through.
But, can I ask, who owns the alley? Is it, it's, it's part of each property? Okay, so, so they can store whatever they want in there?
The lots were laid out on many of those blocks with the backyard, half of the alleyway is in each of the backyards.
I got it, okay.
But, it's, it is the case that we found in many of these places, that people just take it over, so there's lawns, there's flower gardens, garages, it's inaccessible, in this case, and in many other cases.
This was the closest access, if this gentleman would move his woodpile, and we could, I could come to some arrangement with all four neighbors, this would be an option, I explored it, I explored the other option, coming down the side yard, point being to show you guys that we've exhausted all other options to try to make this work. In addition, this was a front, a front yard parking variance granted on 74 Jefferson Road, on the left is a picture of the house, with the car parked in the front yard, almost to the sidewalk, and on the right is the tax map, in yellow is 7779 Jefferson Road, in blue is 74 Jefferson Road, it's directly across the street. The following couple slides were taken directly from the resolution, the property on 74 Jefferson Road was non-compliant with respect to lot width, side yard setback, combined side yard setback, and FAR, I believe they were pre-existing non-conformities, kind of like in our instance. Also taken from the resolution, the laundry and mudroom was expanded, or the proposal was to expand it into the garage. A little bit different than our situation, in this instance, they created their own non-conformity by moving living area into a garage, where they already had a parking stall, the applicant requested bulk variance to permit parking within the front yard, Mr. Bridger noted this is common practice in the borough for residents to park within the front yard, setbacks as many driveways are still situated, and Derek's absolutely correct, I'll show you in, in the upcoming slides, a bunch of pictures. And the zoning board granted the variance, and said the applicants have demonstrated that the variance relief they seek will not substantially, substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance of the borough of Princeton. And...
Never the best.
Next slide. So, the following slides are all my, basically adjacent neighbors, across the street, to the left, to the right, the one exception being the, the two duplexes that have the shared driveway, they're actually practically the only ones that don't park in the front yard, but here's 7880 Jefferson Road, front yard parking, 83 Jefferson Road, parking in the front yard, 87 Jefferson Road, parking in the front yard, 89 Jefferson Road, parking all their cars in the front yard, 9092 Jefferson Road, parking in the front yard. Out of 10 of the closest neighbors, seven park in the front yard, the three being the exception to the right, who have the shared driveway. Also, another chart here, this is the same tax map I showed earlier, all the blue lots have access to a driveway, many of them, most of them parking in the front yard, and there's three lots without access to a driveway. As far as I can tell, maybe they share a driveway with a neighbor, I might be the only one on the whole entire block that does not have access to a driveway. The following slide is the proposed parking arrangement, it shows for two separate curb cuts, two separate driveways, one in front of each unit, for one car to park for each side. There is, you can see marked, there's a little paver walkway that's on the, you know, between the driveway and the home, just as a landing to get to the steps, and I mentioned before, the walkway coming from the street would come out, the driveway would go in its place, and a little walkway to get to the stairs. In the town's memo, the professionals recommended a shared driveway, which we're certainly not in opposition to, I kind of laid it out here, the tree that was identified is this little green circle here, so shifted the driveway further from the tree to save the tree, combined the parking, and it's two stalls, one next to another, and I also believe that this way it saves one of the street parking. Is that pretty accurate, Eric, what I drew there?
Yeah, Jack had it designed too, I mean, if the board's inclined to approve it, we would rather see one curb cut than two, in that space, and preserves street parking, and then, you know, I think the applicant's...
The two...
We prefer one curb cut for the two spaces.
What I have on the slot, current slot here...
And this would preserve all the trees, there wouldn't be any trees taken down if you do the two together?
Yes.
Okay.
There's one tree, it's a nice tree in the front yard, we're also happy to save it by shifting the driveway over, so that's why I kind of pulled this together for you guys to see, and if you're in favor, we're, we're happy to do it this way.
Okay.
I'm finishing my presentation. Oh, well, actually, I did do a summary, I don't know if it's necessary, we're open for...
Go ahead, give your summary.
Okay, I'll give my summary, I did prepare it, so. Okay, so, just to summarize, we attempted multiple other solutions to provide parking for 7779 Jefferson Road, through the side yard, through the neighbor shared driveway, unfortunately, these options were not viable. Variances for parking in the front yard were granted by the zoning board four years ago for a lot direct, directly across the street, the only difference is, they created their own non-conformity by building living area into their garage, where they already had a parking stall, while ours is an existing condition. Practically the whole block parks in the front yard setback, this is common in the borough, and does not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone plan, and in addition to that, 90% of the residents have access to a driveway. Lastly, we're certainly willing to accept the municipal professionals' recommendation of shifting the driveway to save the tree, save a parking stall in the street, by creating a shared driveway, that's all.
How many bedrooms will there be in each side of the house?
There are four, they are three-bedroom, excuse me.
I mean, I'm wondering about extra cars, you know, whether one car is going to be enough per unit?
If there was a way to create more parking, I'm, I'm...
For the two single-family houses?
They're, it's a duplex, so they're combined, but there'll be two separate families.
Two separate families.
It's, because it's downtown, I think the intention is somebody who wants downtown living, to have, I mean, it is what it is, one car.
Yeah, no, that's fine. The other question I have is, if you put them side by side, is one of the, somebody's going to have to make a pretty sharp turn to get out and in, is that correct?
Side by side like this?
Yeah.
They can both drive in straight?
No, because there's only going to be one curb cut.
Yeah.
Be a bigger one.
We'll, we'll design the curb cut with the municipal engineer to accommodate both cars, as like...
So, it's an 18-foot...
There's pretty standard criteria for that, so we'll...
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
I was going to ask about, it said in here that you would be paving it, have you considered putting like tracks with grass in between to make it a little bit more environmentally sensitive?
No, not really, especially because we're basically eliminating the equivalent and impervious with walkways, so whatever we're putting is not really in excess, considering what we're taking out, so I know, I didn't put a lot of thought into that.
We've seen that a lot with, with, you know, parking spaces, a couple of, it looks prettier when you're walking by and there's no cars there, it just looks a little bit more, it just looks nicer, just something to consider.
It's certainly something we can explore.
Would you be opposed to doing that?
Are you planning any screening around the car areas, or plantings, or that sort?
Yeah, what was...
If I look at some of the houses that you've shown us, they have fences, or hedges, or something that, and it's that that reduces the impact of the vehicles on the streetscape.
The idea is to do some type of landscape design around it, even just for marketability purposes, and we're not opposed to, you know, doing some type of hedge row around the driveway, or to, to screen it off?
I mean, looking at it, I, I see a trash problem, and then a screening problem for the vehicles. There are going to be garbage cans associated with the houses, you've eliminated the walkway, you know, around the property.
Down the driveway.
Well, we're concerned, but by letting you put cars in, in the front yard, in a sense, we're altering, we're allowing you to alter the streetscape. we're altering, we're allowing you to alter the streetscape. And clearly, one would like the impact on the streetscape to be an absolute minimum. So that means, I think, if you tell me you're going to put plantings so that the cars are partially screened, that's one thing, but I do think the issue, people, if, if my house on Harriet Drive is any indication, there are garbage cans and recycling cans and edible food that we don't want to eat cans out on the street every day, and I'm just wondering where you're going to accommodate these on the property before they're taken up to the street, because finally they will be there. And you haven't thought of it, is what you're telling me. By not saying anything.
I'm, I'm, I'm thinking. Ah, you know, I really didn't consider the trash cans, there's the area that's in between, you can see, in between the two entrances, where I can do some type of screening and a little, a little walkway to keep trash cans.
That's right, the setback, you could indeed put them in there.
Okay.
But certainly something to consider, I think that would probably be a good place for them. And we can do some type of buffer of screening for those trash cans, and then on garbage day, you can roll them down the driveway. And if the board sees fit to do some type of screening design around the driveway to, you know, screen the cars, then we're happy to do that.
Well, and again, if you did the grass with the tracks, you, you do eliminate all that look of the, the paver in the driveway in the front, which kind of takes away from the, the look, and it's a really, it's a, it's a beautiful duplex, I went by it. It just would be nice if it just kind of blended, so if the other part of it's grass, it's not as noticeable if the cars aren't there that you have a driveway. Just a thought.
In the township, there are parking setbacks that are put in place. They're what, six feet in general?
Typically, they're twenty-five feet from the front yard and eight feet from the side yard. But they vary on some of the larger lots, but...
Question? Comment? Motion?
And is the material, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
The material is some kind of pavers? It, it looks like it's hatched, like it's pavers?
For the walkway? For the landing?
The driveway.
The, the, the proposal was to have blacktop asphalt. If, if the board insists, um, what's the name of that?
Turf pavers.
Turf pavers, where the grass was up through the stuff.
Oh, I mean the hollow ones that grass growing on them.
Yeah. Yeah.
On the, another job that we did, it, the, the concrete drive aisles, the foot and a half wide concrete with the grass paver things in the middle in between?
It, it looks nicer.
So it's, it's not just strips just for the tires, it's the, the whole area, but there's grass coming up through the pavers. You could do the whole area.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, something like that, that just, it just blends in better, it's not as much of an eyesore, and, and it's just not all black, you know, black tar.
Yeah, the inner green area's got a big parking area.
Yeah, yeah, because when the cars aren't there, it just will blend in better with your whole streetscape in the front of the, in front of the home.
Yeah. Again, not, not in opposition, if the board sees fit, I will, I'm open to it, I'll do it.
I, I don't know if this is the builders or, this is your...
I turned it off, sorry. I'm just curious to know what happens to sidewalk in this situation? Does it get, is there, must be a sidewalk that goes in?
There is a sidewalk, it will be fully restored, so there's going to have to be some demolition involved, and then for the township ordinances, we're going to have to restore it, it will be better than it was before, it will be brand new.
Sorry, I missed the discussion about the trash cans. Where are we talking about putting them?
So let me, let me pull the better slide here. Okay. So if you, outlined in blue is the existing building on the screen, can you see that?
You have to go back.
How about now?
No, oh, okay, there.
So outlined in blue is the existing building, it's staying that way, again, we're just doing renovation inside. The driveway would, if the board sees fit, be combined, shared, kind of down the middle, but off to the, to the right-hand side more. The area in between the two entrances, that's kind of recessed in, could do some type of, extend those pavers with the grass growing through into that section, do some screening landscaping and to keep trash and recycling there.
Is it, and this is a question for Derek. I, I thought there was a restriction against trash being, cans being stored in front of the building.
I'm not sure if there is, I mean, it's not a pretty sight. I would put them in the backyard if it's possible, otherwise you want to do a nice screen there. It just seems like you have a landscape area between the two porches that could be better utilized, I mean, that's just, without being screened with a fence, but that's just my opinion.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we, yeah, we generally take the trash.
I think trash cans, I think it's in an old fence, it would be a violation.
Yeah, some real nuisance to carry.
No, it's, it's just, we don't want trash cans visible from the street.
You're right.
Okay.
Fencing with a gate, since the people carry it, they belong behind the building.
Yeah, there's rollers, you know. Should we make a motion?
Okay. Do we have more questions, or do we want to make a decision? Do I hear a motion? There's nobody in the audience.
I'd make a, a motion to approve it with the grass pavers.
I second that.
We have a motion to approve with grass pavers, and the motion is seconded. I'll...
Move to the right.
And move to the right, there's, yeah.
Question for you, is the only condition then, grass pavers, I assume you also want the shared drive plan?
Yeah.
Which shifts the two parking spaces to the north? Okay.
Screening for the garbage cans.
And screening for the garbage cans.
And exterior lighting is my thing, remember that? So I'd like exterior lighting and drainage onto neighboring properties taken into account Okay, so we have a motion, it's seconded, we have conditions. Did you call the roll for us, please go ahead.
Ms. Coulson? Yes. Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Reluctantly, yes.
Mr. Schreiber? Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Ms. Lambrose?
Yes.
Chairman, voice.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, it's approved.
Thank you.
Okay. So, we are at, yeah, ten minutes past it up. We're getting faster. What do I need to take?
Have a nice Thanksgiving holiday, everybody.
I just need the ridge for your robe.
Barry, have a nice Thanksgiving.
Yes, I guess so, but don't buy turkeys, apparently carrying salmonella that's pretty poisonous.
Oh, that's how, look at the...
That's what I read in...
I heard that, yeah.
On the news today.
Put your stocking separate from the turkey.